Jean, could you let us know whether or not the people online can hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much. All right.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. This gentleman to my right is Brandon Sark. He's our neighborhood assistant and helps us with our meetings and other board members, Elizabeth Riley at large.
Samuel Wolf, Sub District Four, the Hahione condo towers.
Joseph Pugh, Sub District Seven, Kalamah Valley.
Paige Alton, Sub District Eleven, Portlock Road and Mauna Lua Triangle, Koko Kai.
Lisa Bishop at large. And online, we have a couple of board members. Jean?
I'm Jean Tierney, Sub District Eight.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Before we go on with our agenda, I would like to say a big mahalo to our outgoing board members. These are board members who are leaving us. This is the last meeting in this term, and we'd like to thank them for their service to the community. These are all volunteers, and we were very, very happy to have them for the last term. So outgoing member Holly Lyons, thank you so much, Holly. Also outgoing member? Outgoing member Chelsea Che. And outgoing member Joseph Pugh. And Jean Tierney online is an outgoing member. Jean, you're not here to receive a lay, but we're very thankful that you joined us in this last term.
Thank you.
There are three, great, there are three other board members who are outgoing members who are not here tonight. They are Ilse Silverkrott, Joel Brilliant, and Dixon Park. So a big mahalo to all of them as well for joining us. Moving forward, the next term, we are going to have four vacant seats on our board. And so I'd like to encourage community members to join us. These open seats are in districts, subdistricts one, three, eight, and nine. So we'll talk more about that at our next meeting, which is going to be the first meeting of the new term. Okay, moving along, we're going to be starting with our status reports, first with the Honolulu Fire Department.
Hello. Aloha Mike Hakko. My name is Jesse Bright. I'm with the Hoi Kai Fire Station with the Honolulu Fire Department. This is our report for May 2025. Before getting into that, there was information previously requested. Where was the location of the single wildland fire listed among the April incidents? The answer is the location of that single wildland fire was 8102 Kalaniyan Ole Highway. This is near the Coco Head Shooting Complex. Into our incidents for May 2025, we had one nuisance fire and six activated alarms. For emergencies, we had 78 medical emergencies, four mountain rescues, and one ocean rescue. A fire safety tip, Honolulu Fire Department website announces that the Honolulu Fire Department will launch two new public data tools on its official website at fire.honolulu.gov. The Incident Trend Dashboard and the Fire Response Search Tool. The Incident Trend Dashboard gives residents easy access to five years of emergency data by neighborhood, including fire, rescue, medical, and hazardous materials incidents. With interactive maps in charge, the dashboard helps communities better understand emergency trends in their areas. The Fire Response Search Tool replaces the previous response mapping tool, which no longer is supported and was recently taken offline. This tool enables individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidents in they have an interest in or may have been involved or affected by. This tool also enhances transparency and provides residents with efficient and direct access to incidents in a secure and accessible format. This is developed by the Honolulu Fire Department's Planning and Development Division with the help from City and County of Honolulu, Po'oukalafelos Intern. These data tools reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency, innovation, and community engagement. To access these tools, which again are the Incident Trend Dashboard and the Fire Response Search Tool, please visit fire.honolulu.gov/news-and-info/. Good luck with that. Any questions?
Are there questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Member from the audience, would you please come up to the microphone so that people online can hear your question? Can you please come on up and use the microphone? Firefighter, right? Am I using the right terminology? Is it firefighter or are you?
Yep, I'm a firefighter.
Firefighter?
Yeah.
We have been discussing a number of issues concerning wildfire mitigation. So there may be people who have questions about how we keep our community safe. So people who have questions, come on up. Cheryl, do you have a question?
Did you talk about the brush fire incident that happened last month or so, but we didn't have any information about where it occurred?
Sorry, I did. I went over that about where it was. Maybe I spoke a little too fast. No, no, it's all right. It was, the address was 8102 Kalaniyan Ole Highway, but this was at the entrance to the shooting, the shooting complex, the shooting range, right at the entrance. And as far as maintenance for wildfires, just cutting back any overgrowth is a big step forward for that, you know, creating that space so that the fire can't get to your property. If it's not on your property, then I'm not sure what route you have to take if the landowner maybe have to reach you to them, but as far as your own property goes, just cutting overgrowth is a huge step towards protecting yourself.
All right, Paige, question?
Hi, thank you so much for your report. Could you tell me the status of the fire mitigation situation in the Mauna Lua Triangle, Koko Kai, which is the backside of Hanama Bay? Sort of?
The backside towards, towards Portlock?
Well, it's the triangle, actually. So it's like Po'ipu Drive, that area up against the, yeah, Mount. Could you tell me the status of all of that? I know that that's been a matter of contention with the neighbors.
I'm sorry, at this time, I don't think we have any info on that as far as like cutting back overgrowth and stuff. I'm not sure who owns that land outside of their property line. That might be a starting point for who needs to clean up any overgrowth. So I, oh, it's the state. Okay, so yeah, then I can't answer on behalf of them, but yes, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing your report.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Moving on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Aloha, Taro Nakamura from District Seven. These are stats as compared to the previous month. Let's see, motor vehicle thefts were, remained the same, two and two. Burglaries were three as compared to one. Thefts in general were eight as compared to 11. And UEMVs, which are theft from auto, that was 14 as compared to 24 the previous month. This is out of total calls of service of 5,892 for the district. Further statistical information can be found at honolupd.org. And our safety tip for the month is just a reminder that we're in hurricane season again. And then last week, I think it was Mexico, they just got caught with one pretty bad one very early on in the season. So it's just a, it's just a reminder that things can happen, things can change very quickly. So what is a watch as compared to a warning? Hurricane watch is just notifying you that something, a hurricane or tropical storm is expected within the next 48 hours. But the warning is the one that you really got to watch out for. Okay, that sounded weird. That's saying that it's expected within 36 hours. So that's the time when you need to take action, protective action for yourself and either to evacuate or shelter in place. And that's our safety tip for the month.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Are there questions for the Honolulu Police Department? No questions at this time, Lieutenant. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Take care. Aloha.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you please come on up? Hold on, Lieutenant. Someone from the audience is coming up to the microphone. Hello. Are you going to be asking a question here?
How much do the speedhumps cost, Rob Burns? How much do the speedhumps cost and are they doing anything good?
What speedhumps are you referring to? Any, any speedhumps?
Many of them. There's many of them.
I have no clue how much they cost. We can ask the mayor's representative to maybe research that for us. What have you been told?
300, 100,000, 200,000, and 300,000 each. Each. I don't know, but it's worth it.
All right, thank you for sharing that. We'll ask the mayor's representative to give us some figures. Oh, it's the state highway, I guess, that puts in those speedhumps. Iris Oda from the Board of Water Supply?
Thinking I was next. So, hi, everyone. So I give the report on the main breaks. On May 9th, there was two main breaks near 1253 Pihana Street and 1223 Pihana Street. And that happens to be near where the Kalamah Water System Improvement Project is currently in the area. But you can go online and look that up on this, our construction status on report, construction status of projects in your area. And I have one general waterfall, general announcement. We have our water quality report. So each year, we bill customers an annual report on the quality and contents of our drinking water. So effective July 1st, you can, we're going to be providing this report on a biannual basis. So we'll issue it in July and December. So you can go online, so you'll get it mailed to your house. But you can also go online at boardofwatersupply.com to look at your report. And you can also request a translated copy. So call our Board of Water Supply Communications Office at 808-748-5041. And that's my announcement. And, oh, excuse me. And I have Kathleen Pahinui that's going to mention a project that's coming up.
Questions for Iris? Yes, Chelsea.
Hi, Iris. Thank you so much for the brief, any idea, and you may have the answers on this, any idea? Who's funding these water quality tests? Seem like those are not that cheap and semiannually twice a year. So is that federal funding through Red Hill Crisis or something else?
Luckily, I have Kathleen that can answer.
The reason, the reason why I'm asking is because when, if the federal funds run out, will we still have it? And then will that increase our cost?
We're not federally funded for water quality tests. We pay for our own water quality tests. We have pretty much forever. So if there are no federal funds, we're still going to be able to test the water. So, yeah. Any other questions for Iris? Thank you. This will just take a quick minute. Board members, I did give you today a handout. We will be replacing our old security fence up at our Coco Head Reservoir 405, the one that you can see at the top, right above Portlock. And I just wanted to give you a heads up that this project was coming because obviously it's a visible structure. And so if you see some activity there, that is what we're doing. So it's going to be a moss green, what we call a expanded mesh fence. It's a much denser material. It's not easily, you can't use bolt cutters to get through it like you can with chain link fence. And if you have any very, very quick questions, if your chair allows, thank you.
Are there questions for Kathleen? Yes, Greg, and then Elizabeth. No, you're good.
Just wondering if there were any incidents that prompted the response.
Not that I'm aware of from our security office. It's just we have an ongoing project to replace all the security fences around the island.
Any other questions? Yes, Paige?
Hi Kathleen. So which is this fence replacing?
Yes.
And which fence line is it replacing? It's already up there. It's an old chain link fence. It's already surrounding the reservoir. The reservoir, okay. Thank you very.
Thank you, Paige. Any other questions? All right. So, community, if you see activity up there on the hill, they're replacing the fence. Thank you very much, Kathleen, for coming and telling us about that. Next on our agenda is the Kaiser Complex schools. And welcome, Principal Gu. We're actually here in his cafeteria, so we're very happy to be here.
Aloha, board. Thank you for having me. Just an update, summertime is a little bit slow, but we're busy planning. It's not as energizing with the kids, you know, during the school year, but we try our best to work hard and plan a great experience for the upcoming school year. Just some announcements coming up. Kaiser High School is holding a barbecue bash, and that's going to be at Kaiser High School's parking lot on Saturday, July 26th from 6:00. So lots of fun. Come check it out. Also, the class of 2005 had a wonderful graduation and it's now on record, showing the recording of that on the Kaiser High TV. So check it out online. Just Google that. Just talking about all of the schools right now. Every one of our schools has a website and we just want you to invite you to visit those websites. It's full of resources for kids, but also the community. So please check it out. We also do a wonderful job of transition. So being part of a Kaiser complex of schools, we really take pride in making sure our kids are, have a smooth transition all the way up from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. And so part of that is making sure we focus in on those transitions between elementary and middle school and middle school and high school. So all of our staff members, we get together with staff members from the feeder schools and we make sure that we plan, plan that smooth transition. And so that happens several times a year. Also on top of that, to provide support to transitions, we have student exploration programs, parent orientation meetings. We have newcomers first day. So I don't know if you know this, but for New Valley and for Kaiser High School, on the first day of school, we invite just the newcomers and the freshmen and then the sixth graders for New Valley, just so they have a day to their own, so that they can get used to the campus. So lots of support. We also have clubs and sports that we provide. Also, summer activities are going strong. So one thing I want to talk about is that our summer schools, every single one of the Kaiser complex of schools is offering some sort of summer learning hub or summer school. And so we're not obligated to do that, but we do that because we're committed to the students and making sure that they keep up their academics, but also have a good experience over the summertime. All right. And then our welcome back to school night, just a heads up to the community, but also the parents would be, most schools will have it on August 1st, and then all of our schools start fresh on August 5th. All right. That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you very much for having me. Open up to questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Gu on any school activity?
Hello, Mike Hakko. My name is Tara Malia Gregory. I was just elected by the people of HRP, Hawaii Republican Party. I am now the District 18 Chair. I just wanted to introduce myself. I did have a question. I had a great conversation with KSBE a couple of days ago just regarding some ways that we as a community actually support you at Kaiser High School. One of the main issues that is going to come up tomorrow at the town hall meeting is just the land usage that you guys know of, and obviously the leases being up. One of the things that they mentioned that I would love to be a part of and see if maybe there, a committee could be formed, is if we can actually get behind some sort of workforce, starting in the high schools to where we're actually getting them involved in some sort of workforce coming into May, maybe April and May, so that when June and July come along, all of the different restaurants and I know Cookies Clothing and just different businesses, they really could use it. And then also maybe right before Christmas time, if we can just move forward with that as well, I would love to be a part of that. I mentor kids, so I would love to step in. And if that's something that you would be open to, I'd love to be a part of that. Yeah.
Definitely, we definitely embrace community partnerships, and that's what makes our school special, you know, being here in the community in Hoi Kai. You know, we just think that partnering with community members, but also businesses is very important for the experience that we provide for our kids. Kaiser High School does do some things already, like our CTE program or career and technical education. So they do some work-study programs with that in many different areas. We call it pathways, career pathways. For instance, my daughter, she went through the Pharmacy Tech Program as a senior at Kaiser, I mean, actually a junior at Kaiser, and she took courses from a professor at KCC. And so she was able to receive a certificate for that before she graduated from high school. So, yeah, we welcome all of these partnerships and these quality things. So, yeah, quality people, quality programs, and quality partnerships. That's the three QPs.
Any other questions for Mr. Gu? I do want to mention that I joined Mr. Gu on a safe routes to school audit, a walking audit. There was a member from the Department of Transportation Services that was here to walk the perimeter of the school. So they're going to be conducting a speed audit and to find out whether or not there is speeding and whether or not some speed mitigation calming meth, methods might be warranted. So we'll see what happens. And I did, by the way, Joseph, mention to them that they should take a look at the condition at Neo Valley Middle School because of all of the students waiting along the highway there. We certainly would support a change in the bus route to go into Neo Valley to pick up, pick up students before and after school on weekdays. Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Gu.
Thank you so much for your wonderful support, support. Thank you.
Okay. Any community announcements from the board members or members of the audience? I do have a couple while Tom is coming up to the podium. The Coco Head Shooting Complex will again be open from 12 to 4 p.m. Wednesdays through Friday. Over the past three weeks, they had closed the weekday shooting times for some long-term safety improvements that they're surveying the area for. So the Wednesday through Friday, 12 to 4, the shooting range will be open again, starting tomorrow. In addition, another community announcement, the Hoi Kai wastewater pump station number five is going to be, they have plans for site improvements. This is the pump station at 100 Hanapepe Loop. A new building is required as the existing building is too small, and to minimize the footprint, the new diesel generator will be housed in a new building that abuts the existing generator building. And an indoor fuel tank is proposed underneath the generator, which will reduce the design footprint. So there is going to be some improvements being made at that site. So if you see any construction going on there, that's what's happening there. Other community announcements. Elizabeth?
I just want to mention, I'm really proud to share that over at Kiavava Wetland, just off of Hoi Kai Drive, the endangered bird, a laula, have had babies. So it's really exciting that they're thriving and we've got keiki. So now's the time you want to come on out and volunteer. The next opportunity for the community would be on the 12th of July. Every second Saturday, we're out there, we open the gates at 8:00 in the morning. You could just come and learn about the place or you can malamateaina. And if you want to learn more, just go to lhkh.org, lhkh.org. Thank you.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Cooper. I live here in the valley. Many of you may be aware that Council Chair Tommy Waters is co-sponsoring a town hall meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. in the Kaiser High School cafeteria. As his co-sponsors, the I represent HARD, which stands for Haha Yoni Advocates for Respectful Development, welcomes the largest possible number of our supporters and allies to attend. Chair Waters has requested that we let Kamehameha Schools Bishop Estate know how we feel about potential high-rise and commercial development in this valley. Since Kamehameha Schools Bishop Estate will attend the town hall and make a presentation themselves. It's possible there'll be only standing room, so we strongly invite all of you to come early. At the last board meeting, we were asked how many of our petition signatories live in Hoi Kai by Paige. So Paige, as a gift, I have the exact statistics. 91% of those who signed online live in Hoi Kai. At least 85% of those who signed in person live at 96825. So approximately 88% overall live in Hoi Kai. You can all sign the petition if you haven't. It's constantly growing and our goal is 10,000 signatures. So please spread the word, bring friends, bring family, bring neighbors. And this could not have been done by any one of us. So I have shout-outs tonight. Rep Joe Gideon is here with Jillian Anderson. They've been very supportive, as was their predecessor, Chief Ward. Tommy Waters has been, Principal Gu has been, thank you. Many of you, Brad Coles is the manager of one of the buildings in question. He has a large network. He's told Sam Wolf is our rep. And then going up and down the row here, I think five of you have signed. And we have many other petition signatories. Two of our co-founders, Cheryl and Rudy Park, are here. Without all of you, we would be signatures in the dozens rather than in the thousands. So feel good about that. And thank you, everyone. See you tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., not 7:00, Kaiser Cafeteria.
I have a question, Tom. Will tomorrow night's town hall be recorded? I ask selfishly because I have another board meeting tomorrow night and can't make it. So I would like to be able to see it at another time.
Mr. Waters' office first said that it would and then that it wouldn't, but I would imagine many cell phones there could be available to record it that way.
All right, thank you.
Another question?
Yes, Paige?
Yeah, hi, Tom. Thank you for the information. So KSBE has said that they are attending.
We've been told that, that they would make a 10-minute presentation.
So they have confirmed that they are attending.
And our, my fellow leader, Cheryl, has been in touch with Tommy's office constantly. And our, my fellow leader, Cheryl, has been in touch with Tommy's office constantly.
No, not Tommy, KSBE.
No, no, and that's who told, it went through that grapevine, through Tommy, from KSBE to Cheryl, right? That they would be there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Tom?
There was a rep who always sat at the end there, and he said, when this day happens, get the vote out, get as many people as you can. We're doing that. Please do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We have a member online, Chris Salas. You have an announcement?
Aloha, Chair. Yeah, I was, I visited your board a couple of times in the last few months, but I just wanted to make another announcement about an event that's coming up in September, the Honolulu Century Ride. It'll be taking place on Sunday, September 28th. We'll be leaving Waikiki area around 6:20 a.m., biking out. The Keighi Coast will be closed from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. as cyclists go out towards Makapu and then going up the coast towards Kailua and onwards. And then when they come back, they'll be taking the back road, the Hawaii Kai Drive, around Coco Head. But just a friendly reminder on Sunday, September 28th, that the event will be happening, and I'll put my email and website and some information in the chat if anyone wants to reach out to me.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? All right, you have a community announcement to share? Welcome.
First time attendee. My name's Scott Long. I've been, you know, resident of Hawaii Kai over 50 years and such, and I didn't know where to interject myself, but I wanted to ask the board if there's a way that you guys can support the farmers. Specifically, though, yeah, whether it be asking government or the governor, the mayor, to help find them some spots, or even reaching out to the private sector, people like Peter Savio, where they had lots, open lease to own lots just recently and such, yeah? And also to ask the board, maybe the farmers need some help in having an exit strategy, yeah? But, you know, I think there's some sense of urgency, right, with the deadlines coming up and such. And so whatever help you folks can do by engaging to find alternatives to that, I would ask them. And so I apologize, Chair. I don't know if this is where the right place was.
Thank you for sharing your concern. We are also very concerned, but I'm not sure that we're able to do much. I wish that there were some things that we could do in terms of exit strategies for the farmers. We do support agriculture in the area, and we have made our position known several times. We've supported the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan and also worked on many of the items in that plan that call for agriculture in our area.
Again, maybe we can open it a little wider. That's all I'm asking.
If you have ideas of what we might be able to do, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. Are there any other community announcements? Are there any public-generated issues? Hello, Natalie?
Good evening, Chair, Mayor, Board Members of the Community. Natalie Wasson for the record. I just wanted to publicly thank the city for putting the sharos on Hawaii Kai Drive. That's between Keahole and the Waialua there by the post office. I asked for that to be done six years ago, and almost to the date, it's been done. When I was told it would be done, it was as soon as possible. So here we are, six years later, just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Natalie, I'm sorry. What was it that they placed?
Oh, sharos. Okay, so that's when there's not enough room for a bike lane, they put these arrows with a bicycle emblem on the roadway, just to let motorists know that bicyclists will be around and are allowed to use the road.
Oh, I see. The sign that says you have to share the road with bicyclists, right?
Yes, it's a painted symbol.
All right. Yes, Elizabeth?
I just was going to ask you, did you follow the bill about e-bikes?
Only a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other public-generated issue? Yes, Jean, online, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I sent you an email about an issue that my neighbor brought up, where trees, five trees that were in a curb cut down the block from where I live, were, had to be cut down at the behests of the city and some crazy ordinance. These trees are older than all of us, and I find it appalling that these trees got cut down. And hopefully, we'll hear back from the city as to why we're regressing on planting new trees in the city.
Thank you, Jean. I did send your email with the pictures attached to the mayor's representative to see whether or not she was able to follow up on that. We'll see if she has any kind of a report. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other public-generated issue? If not, we're going to be moving on to our presentations. Our first presentation is on the City and Counties Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement Program. This is CORE. Mike Buck, who is a senior planner with the division, the CORE Division of the Department of Emergency Services, is here online. Mike, I understand you're not feeling well tonight, and would you like to defer your presentation to another month? Mike, are you there? All right, he has his microphone muted, so I'm just going to assume that he's not able to present tonight, and we'll defer this to next month or the month following. So our next presentation is from Hawaiian Electric Company on their wildfire safety strategy. And our presenters tonight are Michelle Chang and Kurt Sui from Hiko. Michelle, welcome.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair, Mayor, Neighborhood Board Members, elected officials, and community members. I'm Michelle Chang, Community Relations Specialist at Hawaiian Electric, and also joining me is Kurt Sui, Director of Community Fairs. We just want to thank you for inviting us tonight to share about Hawaiian Electric's wildfire safety strategy. So just some background information, we first began developing the wildfire safety strategy back in 2019, and we've since updated it in 2023. In January of this year, we filed with the Public Utilities Commission a three-year strategy that builds action into steps into things we've taken and also outlines a short, mid, and long-term initiative to reduce the risk of wildfires igniting from our equipment. If you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So some of the objectives in our wildfire safety strategy include identifying areas of risk, addressing drivers of risk through our four-pillar approach of wildfire safety strategy, also engaging with community members and partners to inform them about our strategies, but also learning and taking away from coordination and talk story with each other. We're continuously improving our strategy and implementing and identifying, tracking key metrics and data as we go through this process. And lastly, we're estimating costs and schedules based on information that we have today. Next slide, please. So, you know, we recognize wildfires are a societal and economic threat, where it requires many lines of defense between utilities, first responders, landowners, government, and individuals. So Hawaiian Electric's infrastructure, if you look at that slide, falls under the ignition management criteria when taking a collective approach to reduce the threat of wildfires. Next slide, please. So we'll go a little bit into the four pillars of our wildfire safety strategy. You know, it's in place to enhance resilience and also lessen the risk of wildfire from the electric grid. So if you look at the first pillar, grid hardening and redesign, it involves upgrading our infrastructure and improving reliability impacts resulting from safer operational practices. The second pillar is greater situational awareness, which enables us to monitor environmental conditions and improve real-time fire monitoring and make operational decisions in a timely manner for public safety. The third pillar focuses on improving operational practices and tools to reduce ignition risks and enhance safety and reliability. And the last pillar is engaging with stakeholders and community partners through tailored outreach and events where we can collaborate and continue to refine our strategy, process, and programs. So just something to share, we spent $120 million on wildfire safety last year. And, you know, it's not just a plan, but it's a technical roadmap for us, and it's our commitment to making sure the community is safe. Last year, we did focus on high-risk areas on Oahu, which included West Oahu, and this year, we're focusing still on the high-risk area, but also including a medium-risk area, which encompasses East Honolulu. Next slide, please. So if you look at the first pillar, hardening and redesigning of the grid, some examples of work that we've done and we plan to continue include replacing and upgrading wood poles. We're also adding steel mesh to the new utility poles, which also serves as a fire retardant and deters insects. Other things we're doing are replacing older overheads with new, more resilient lines. And in some areas, we're switching from a single-strand copper, which can become brittle over time, to a stronger aluminum conductor or covered conductors in wildfire areas. We're also installing fire-safe fuses that are going to reduce the risk of ignition, and new lightning arresters that's going to help to protect equipment from any lightning strikes. Next slide. So the second pillar focuses on expanding and improving situational awareness. Some things that we've put into place is a procedure where our company personnel serves as spotters, and they'll be physically in the field in strategic locations to help monitor and report any kind of hazardous things out in the field for elevated wildfire risk. Another thing we're adding is installing some network of weather stations in wildfire areas on four islands, and it's going to help to provide us with information about wind, temperature, and humidity to help the company better predict and respond to fire weather conditions. And the other thing we're also installing are AI cameras. Those cameras gather information from the ground, and it helps us to quickly detect wildfires. Those AR cameras are installed in high-risk areas. They rotate 360, and they're monitoring 24/7. And it's also alerting Hawaiian Electric and first responders of any anomalies when it's detected. If you're interested in checking out the cameras, there's a link up there, and it's HTTPS backslash www alertwest.live. So when you have time, it might be worth checking out. The third pillar is improving operational practices. Some of the things we've been doing are using what we call enhanced fast-trip settings, which also we abbreviate as EFT, and PSS, which is our public safety power shut-off. And with that, advanced weather monitoring is our last line of defense to keep communities safe from the threat of wildfires. Something to share with you is the EFT setting is going to shut off power much quicker than normal once a fault is detected. The circuit breakers are then going to close quickly. It's going to quickly open the impacted circuit, so it stops the flow of electricity. But the downside to that is customers may experience a longer duration and more frequent outages than in the past. Another thing we're doing are inspections to prioritize where our hardening work needs to take place. These inspections use drones, helicopters, to check our infrastructure in areas that are inaccessible by foot. We've been doing a lot of inspections in the Haione and Kualama Valley area and in other parts of East Honolulu, and you may notice an increased volume of work this year that we've been doing. Helicopters can also be used when we're doing work to help transport crews and equipment to inaccessible areas. And the last thing that we're doing is ongoing vegetation management, and that's, you know, helping to support the reliability of electrical service and to mitigate fire risk. And we regularly inspect trees that are growing near our power lines, and we'll continue to trim vegetation where it's identified. Next slide, please. And so the last pillar is strengthening stakeholder and community partnerships. We continue to engage with partners, like other utilities, emergency responders, government agencies, as well as the public, to share outreach and also gather feedback. I want to share that, you know, to date, we've had about 100 in-person and virtual outreach events with the community that involve town hall meetings and emergency preparedness fairs throughout the island. And I'm happy to share that we're going to be hosting on July 14th, Monday, here at Haione Elementary, from 5:30 to 8:30, East Honolulu Community Town Hall Meeting. So I hope that you guys can all join, and you can learn more about the ongoing work that we're doing for wildfire safety, but also things in the community that might be of concern. Last slide. So, you know, we just want to thank you all for coming, spending your time, and allowing us to share about what we're doing. If you need more information, you can visit the website, hawaiinelectric.com/wildfiresafety. And if you're interested, there's also handouts on that table that go more in-depth about some of the things that we're doing. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Michelle. We're going to open it up for questions, but before that, can you please repeat the date and time for your town hall meeting here at Haione?
Sure. So the town hall will be Monday, July 14th, at Haione Elementary, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. The format's going to be like an open house for the first half hour, then we'll go into the town hall portion, excuse me, with Q and A, and then the last half hour will be an open house format again. So we'll have subject matter experts, you know, to talk about the different things that we're doing.
Thank you. And your vegetation management hotline, that's available to the public to call in if they see possible risk areas that Hiko needs to address?
Yes. So there's the vegetation hotline number if you see any kind of trees or things that need to be trimmed, but we also have a hotline for reporting, like trouble calls.
All right, thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
Michelle, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate that. I have a couple of questions on your brief. My first question is, you mentioned that last year, Hiko spent $120 million on, was it for fire?
Wildfire safety.
Safety. So how much of that was spent on Oahu? Can you break that down approximately?
You don't have the exact number. I can go back and check on it, and I can get the information back to Chair Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And the second question I have is, you also mentioned under the four pillars, under harden and redesign the grid, under upgrading infrastructure, targeting undergrounding is one of the things. And we know that's been a real big issue, especially after the line of fire. But how much undergrounding is going to be targeted for Oahu? Is that, and I know it's a difficult question to ask, but I mean, is, and is anything on Oahu, is it strictly due to rail building, or is there other areas on Oahu where undergrounding is being targeted?
So I want to say, and Kurt can correct me, it might be in like the higher-risk areas, maybe like on West Oahu side where...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that the medium and low-risk areas are not part of that. I think we would just need to do an overall assessment to see where it best can fit.
Yeah, because I would hope it would be areas... Yeah, because I would hope it would be areas not necessarily only associated with rail because we have other areas on island that really would need that.
With poles or overhead might be at more of a risk. So maybe undergrounding might be a better option in those areas.
Yeah, I would hope so. Okay, so.
Specifically to address, it's going to be in, when we say strategic spans of lines, and really looking at areas of critical egress. So working with the Department of Transportation, Department of Transportation Services, trying to prioritize where those locations are to see where could be a safety improvement in looking at where those lines get undergrounded.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks again.
Greg?
You mentioned the camera and the weather stations. Are any of those in Hahaione or Kalama?
So I actually have a count. Hold on. Okay, so currently, we've installed seven weather stations and four AI cameras.
And any of those here in East?
In the East Honolulu area, Hawaii Kai area.
Oh, okay. Specifically in Kalama Valley or Hahaione?
I don't have the specific location. I can get that information to Chair Mayor and she can report it back to you.
Well, it'll probably come up on the 14th, I would think. Also, I'm just kind of wondering because power lines do cross the Ko'olau's, which has to be the most weather vulnerable sites. Is there any viable undergrounding that can occur there so that you don't have power lines right at the summits?
It's a tough one just with respect to getting the equipment in there and trenching in the mountainous terrain is extremely difficult. Worrying has been evaluated. I think that for that voltage of line though, it's 138 kilovolts, which isn't the easiest to underground. But again, that is being looked at. We will be, as a follow-up to the safety strategy that Michelle is presenting on, we are doing an overall undergrounding study that is a follow-up to look at it specifically from a wildfire mitigation standpoint.
Joe, I mean Sam, excuse me.
Thank you so much for your presentation and the efforts that you're doing to create a more resilient grid, especially in light of the tragedy that occurred on Maui. In regards to Hawaii Kai, we've suffered a significant amount of power outages, especially over the last couple of years. We've been told that a lot of it does have to do with the power lines on the Waimeanalo side going along the Ko'olau's. Will this, the upgrading of the infrastructure and the resiliency in the grid, can we expect fewer power outages in Hawaii Kai because of these efforts? Or can you talk more about what's being done to create more sustainable power?
So I would like to say yes, that's our effort. But also in talking about areas where it is underground with direct buried cable, when I do talk about the fast-trip settings, just keep in mind that once that setting is in place, if it's tied to a direct buried cable, say underground, that's going to cause longer outage duration. So that might be something that people are experiencing now as we start to implement that. But yes, the reconductoring, you know, resiliency, all of that, it's in place to, you know, provide better service and electricity. But also keep in mind, as your other board member talked about, the transmission lines coming over from the Ko'olau, that's all that's feeding East Honolulu. So if something were to go down or there's problems there, it could trigger kind of a downward effect.
Michelle, actually herself has been helping to support a lot of the planned work with Darrell, who's here with us tonight, replacing a lot of the transmission infrastructure. So like you mentioned, those pole replacements that are occurring at those highest voltage levels have been causing outages and weather incidents. And those are more like wooden poles that get impacted by trees, obesias. We're aggressively working to install steel poles along that Ko'olau corridor, impairing that with hazardous tree removal program. And so looking at rather than just trimming the obesia, removing them altogether.
Chelsea?
Thank you so very much for a very informative presentation, especially on the resilience piece. You know, when I looked at a, I can't really quite recall a number of the biologists, but and then Hiko is pretty upfront about the causes and all that. And I noticed things like the, clearly that you have these, you know, transport that the lines go down. And the second and third item could be like power generation. So what is the definition of power generation as part of the power outage?
So the generation-related outages would be something to the effect of when we would need to announce something like about rolling blackouts, where there's not enough generation to meet demand. And so that's more a capacity issue. So that's been rare, but it has happened recently due to a combination of, we also purchase power from third parties that provide power. So when those systems go down for repair, unfortunately, it may go down unexpectedly when we have scheduled repairs going on. And so in those instances, we have had those shortfalls in generation. So we're working as hard as we can to ensure that doesn't happen going forward. We're aggressively looking to bring on new projects to provide energy to replace a lot of the older generation that has been going down. So it really is that when it's related to generation, it's due to not having enough power.
Not enough power, yeah. Right. So my really short second part of the question is, so you've been at this for a long time as Hiko. So what is the, on the market, what power generation capacity needs to be for, to prevent rolling blackouts? And is that some sort of a campaign that you're on to get there? And how long is that? How long will that take essentially?
Absolutely. We do have a supply currently. The thing to keep in mind is that the time of day when that would normally happen is during the peak hours. So that's between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. So that's when everybody is getting off of work, coming home, powering up their ovens, their washers, their dryers. And we're all using energy at roughly around the same time. We're trying to approach that by strengthening our firm generation so the generation we can control. Obviously, we have a lot of solar energy during the day, but not in the evenings. So we are trying to boost the number of homes and properties that have batteries that can provide energy during that time. And we're also looking at buying power from customers that are generating power during that peak period. So it's a combination, really that's the focal point, is we do have a good amount of generation during the daytime. It's really that 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. when those scheduled outages or announced outages would occur in an emergency of not having the capacity. But there's really this, what's called a load curve, where you see this spiking energy in the afternoon. That's when all the renewables start to taper off and all of the usage goes up. So we really be focusing on that time of day between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. And so we're getting there. We're, I think, we're looking and focusing on more firm generation. Our power plants definitely help in that space. And the providers that we purchase from that can control, we'll be able to ramp up and ramp down. Those are the types of solutions that we're looking at, balancing with the renewables that are more intermittent, weather-related, like when the sun is out or when the wind is blowing.
Okay, other questions? Cheryl, did you have a question?
Thanks for that informative presentation. You know, last week I saw helicopters dropping poles in our valley. I don't know what kind of poles they were, but what are your plans to maybe, or do you have plans, to replace the wooden poles with steel poles around here?
So most times if there's a wood pole, we do a replacement one-for-one. The steel poles will go where we have the higher voltage of the 138 kilovolt. Anything stepping down to a lower voltage is usually going to be a wood pole. Yes.
So I don't know what is, what kind of voltage do we have out here, like just along the ridge line?
So usually along the ridge line, it might be a 12 kilovolt, which is the lowest where it's going to be distribution down to everywhere.
Those are going to probably remain wooden. What happens in the event of, I mean, do you even consider the potential fire danger when you're putting in wooden poles versus steel poles?
So the steel poles are going to have that steel mesh around it where it's going to be like a preventative if there is a fire and the pole catches on fire.
And what kind of preventative measures are you taking to remove vegetation around the utility lines?
So that's part of our wildfire safety strategy. So we do go and we inspect, we do clear it. We do work with landowners, if it's a private landowner, where we can trim to where it's enough clearance for us to do our work.
And what is the vegetation hotline?
Michelle, do you have extra copies of that?
I can give it to you on a silent.
Because the other thing, I just talked a couple of weeks ago to a resident in the valley who said that he called Hiko as well as KSBE to remove a tree that was really close to the power line. And what he got was this, you know, one said they're not responsible and the other one said that they are responsible. So what happens, I mean, what is supposed to be the protocol? Because you're running these lines on Bishop's State's property, but who is actually being tasked with following up and removing vegetation even when it is reported?
So we do have easements that allow us to access the pole equipment. So we're responsible for the vegetation that's within our easement, which is a certain span.
Could you speak up, Kurt?
Sorry, the home electric has easements around each of its poles and infrastructure that allows us to maintain. This is granted by the landowner. So we will maintain the vegetation within that span of the easement. And so for this instance where it's a tree, the tree is not something that we would remove because we're mainly taking care of the easement and we have a span of distance that we have to keep clear of our power lines and our poles and equipment. So in those instances, we will work with the landowner to figure out what's the best plan going forward. I mean, we're not really in a situation where we can clear beyond our easements without permission. And that's the challenge, I think, in working in all of these spaces with respect to vegetation management.
Okay, Cheryl, can you make the last question?
Okay, so like if a tree is outside your easement, but the branches are going like right into the power line?
Through the branches, but not remove the tree.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, you had a question?
I was just wondering if at your July town hall, might you talk a little bit about other alternative energy that Hiko may be considering as source?
Sure, absolutely, Elizabeth. So I think that for the town hall, it's an open floor of topics. So it's whatever the community is interested in, we're happy to address.
Other questions? Are you all waiting to ask questions? Come on up.
So just as a, thank you for the presentation, by the way. Just as a protocol, so just because Lahaina's on everyone's mind, I know it's on mine every day. And my question would be, there are concerns whenever these rolling blackouts happen and there is some fear. So what would just be like a layman's protocol for that? All I think is, are there going to be sirens and is the water going to come out of the holes? So does this presentation address that, I guess, would be my simplified question? Yeah, that would be my simplified question if the presentation addresses ensuring confidence here in the community that we have nothing to fear since we have Cal Highway and that's the major highway.
So a question in regards to power shut-offs or general. So East Honolulu, east side of Oahu is not in an area designated, sorry, Huaikai is not in a public safety power shut-off designated area. Specifically for Oahu, it's the Leeward Coast. Every island has a high-risk area where we do have a power supply shut-off program. Also Maui has a certain area. So all of this is on our website if you're curious to look at the maps. But Huaikai, East Honolulu, is not in that PSS de-energization area. We do have processes for that. We have an emergency alert system. So for our Leeward Coast customers, we are having, we're encouraging them to update all of their contact information in our system. And we will do our best to provide notice, text message, email, phone call, alert. We also will work closely with Haima, Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, Department of Emergency Management, prior to any power shut-offs. And likely it's due to a weather event, so we wouldn't do this unless like, referencing of Maui, it was a very dry and windy day. And so there's more information that we would leverage from the National Weather Service as part of that decision.
So I'm just going to plug something. I love everybody's interest in wildfire safety. So there's a phenomenal group called Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. And I'm proud to say that Kamala Nui Valley and Mariners Cove was the very first nationally-recognized firewise community under the guidance of Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, who has been here, who has done presentations and is now working with other community groups in this area and throughout the island, throughout Hawaii, to form additional community pop-up wildfire communities. And, you know, just phenomenal information, great group to work with. And for those that are all interested, from trees to working with landowners, in Kamala Nui Valley, we have the people who own the cemetery land, Kamehameha schools, 400 or so residents of Mariners Cove. Fabulous. You know, we have firewise breaks and community engagement for education. So I just wanted to say that this is happening and for those that are interested, I'd highly recommend that you get involved because in your neighborhood or wherever you live, you can start one of these firewise communities. Thanks.
Other questions? Scott, did you have a question?
You may have answered this already, but what about redundancy? Is there a way of rerouting the power and such? So if you have substations out of this, so Waimeanalo drops physically, is there a way of rerouting the power?
Huaikai is in a situation similar to the Moku called Ko'olau Poko Windward Side, where the main source of power comes over the Ko'olau's and then comes back around. There was a project years back that was strongly opposed to install redundant transmission lines mayor for the Kamokupukale project that was heavily opposed by the community. And Hawaiian Electric is no longer pursuing that option. But that is the reason for not having a secondary way to bring in bulk power into this side. However, we are, as Elizabeth, working with communities to plan for resilient options for communities to support planning that may be occurring. A lot of the substations that was asked about are distributed within neighborhoods. So again, but again, that is all fed through a bulk delivery system over the Ko'olau's.
Paige and then Johanna?
I just have a quick suggestion that since this conversation has sort of taken a turn to firewise, maybe you guys should invite the firewise people to your meeting on the 14th and they could answer questions because it's obviously taking a turn here. It's going to take a turn at your meeting also. So maybe sort of two birds with one stone at that meeting. Because it is a combination sort of interest in both sides.
Absolutely. And we are very fortunate to have HWOMO as partners, as part of our strategy. And we are very big supporters financially of their efforts too. They're actually informing a lot of the analysis, the risk maps they were working on. And we're right now helping to fund the firewise coordinator position by HWOMO. So it's a really great partnership and I appreciate the suggestion, Mo.
Johanna, our last question.
Thank you for the presentation. About maybe three months ago or so, my mother got... About maybe three months ago or so, my mother got an email from Hiko saying, stay tuned, scheduled blackouts. We haven't gotten any update. Do you have an update for us about potentially when the scheduling of the blackouts to implement? It sounds like this plan that you've presented on may require.
We don't have any scheduled blackouts planned, but it may be when we have pole replacements, we take out certain sections of neighborhoods. We de-energize the line so that our crews can replace the pole while the line's not energized. And then, so it's usually for a span of like roughly 8:30 AM to around 2:30 or 3:00 PM. And then we'll restore power by the afternoon pending. There's no, you know, uncertainties that come up. But there are no scheduled blackouts for Huaikai that are planned other than these replacement jobs where customers will receive an email or a paper notification a couple of weeks in advance. So we can all plan accordingly. But then again, we won't have any unscheduled blackouts or anything that we have coming up for the community.
All right. Thank you, Michelle and Kurt for coming and joining us tonight. We appreciated your very informative presentation. Thank you. Our second presentation is about a traffic study that the state did concerning left turns from Coco Marina Shopping Center onto Kalana Anoole Highway. And our presenter is Galen Wong from the Hawaii Department of Transportation. Welcome, Galen. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Chair and the rest of the board. I got other things that I also want to cover that came about what happened this for our department and our division. So whatever handouts I have, it's also there if any of the audience want, want copies of my handout. My first presentation is our, what happened during the legislative session and all the highway bills that were enacted or what happened during the last few weeks of conference. So the first sheet is the, all the bills that were passed in the legislative session and the ones that so far got enacted. It's in the third, I mean, right side of the sheet. Those are the bills already signed by the governor. So if you, if you look at any of those acts and the ones that have blank right now, those will probably get enacted by July 9th. That's the last day for the governor to veto the bill or to let the bill pass without his signature. And those two bills that he's proposing to veto is the traffic safety one regarding the border red light detector enforcement and putting it in location on the North Shore. That's one of them. And the other one was that bicycle one.
I'm sorry, excuse me. What does this have to do with Cal Highway and Coco Marina?
This is all my stuff that I brought over that dealing with our section, our highways division that I want to bring up with you guys right now, just, just to share.
So this is not a presentation about Coco Marina?
That's the last thing I have. So this is just part of the stuff that I do and that we, our department is doing. So this is just more for you guys, informing you guys. So this is just, yeah.
Just for information, Galen comes to our meetings periodically to provide information on, from HDOT. So he's kind of catching up on some of the other items as well as he's going to, going to give us the traffic study.
What happened to our, our section, our division?
So go ahead, Galen.
And then the last two pages are the bills that are, died in conference. And some of them were like the border red light, the speed cam. Also the the miles for you on the Hawaii road usage charge that the county wants to impose on all the EV drivers. So that's one of the bills that died in conference. But, and now I can go over what happened after that. This is, this is Hawaii road usage surcharge. I mean, Hawaii road usage charge for electric vehicles. Okay, next week, Tuesday, all the electric vehicles will now get you'll get rid of the surcharge, the $50 surcharge that they give to the electric vehicles. And now you're going to have this Hawaii road uses charge onto your registration and it's based on your, a miles you travel in a year. It's a thousand miles, you get charged every thousand miles you drive, you get charged $8. So the first year, you're going to get rid of your surcharge that you're not going to pay that anymore starting next week. And from now, and then when you get your, your registration for your electric vehicle during that time after July 1st, they're asking if you want to pay $50 flat rate or you want to move to the road usage based on amount of miles you travel in the one year period, based on your I mean, your safety inspection records. But the first year, everyone will be paying for $50. But if you travel less than the 6,400 or 500 miles, because that's under the $50, they're going to supposedly refund you or rebate you some money or credit you for your next, the year after registration. So you're going to have that opportunity, option to choose paying $50 flat rate or choosing the road usage charge amount of, based on amount of miles you travel in a year, based on your.
But that's only for the electric cars?
Only electric vehicles.
And for everybody else?
For everyone else is through the $50 on the, you know, the other vehicles. And then the regular cars are based on gas tax rates yet. So the Hawaii road usage charge will go on for three years at your choice of going $50 or the amount of miles you want to travel. Then after 2028, then everyone goes straight to the Hawaii road usage charge based on the amount of miles traveled. Any questions on, on the program?
So it'll affect everybody beginning 2028?
Well, only, you know, electric vehicles.
Oh, still only electric vehicles?
And in 2033, they're going to try to get everyone into the program. And then eventually, because of the amount of, they're going to eventually push it to all regular cars, the gas cars and stuff like that. Based on all your road usage on the road, to be the equitable way of collecting funds for the highways division and to do road workings, stuff like that.
Couple of questions. Chelsea and then Elizabeth.
So I'm to understand that, that the state encouraged us to go to alternate energy for vehicles and then they're going to charge us for complying with that.
Right, but right now they're charging.
Because the batteries are too heavy.
$50 surcharge?
I know, I know, but so.
So you're not going to pay that anymore. They're taking that one off and you're going to get, we're going to go into the road usage charge.
Right, so you're, you're going to.
Next three years or less, based on the amount of miles you travel.
So you're going to watch everyone and how far they go, where they go, you charge us. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, the final amount is only $50.
That's what we voted for, right.
Thank you for letting us know what happened at the ledge. Can you, you mentioned about the e-bike, not, the governor's not going to sign it. Do you know anything more about the why?
It's based on something with dealing with electric vehicles that the Attorney General found out that it might be unconstitutional. Because of the bill too, they stuck in all these other things involving with the e-bike stuff and, and stuff like that. I think that's what is holding up that bill. But right now, they're trying to work out and see if it will or not get vetoed because he has until July 9th. Right now, he's in, his intent is to veto the bill, but he has until July 9th to decide if he wants to or not.
They thought, or I don't know what they stuck in there, I can only imagine, but initially the intent was about safety and order. Okay.
Because they put in a whole bunch of other stuff in the bill and that's, that's, I think that's what's causing the problem right now.
Okay.
And if there is a special session or there will be probably a special session between now and the end of the year because of the ramifications of what happens with the federal government funding for all programs. They might be able to address some of the concerns on, on that kind of bill or the bills that died in committee. So that still could happen and the bill could be still fixed at that time.
Thank you. Holly? No, go ahead.
Sorry, I do, I have one very quick question back to the Hawaii road usage. What about hybrid vehicles? They're electric but use gas. So then are you going to be charged on both sides?
I think no, I think they're going to still charge the $50 straight fee, surcharge fee.
Okay.
I think, yeah, for now. And then, I don't know, they're going to study it over the next three years and figure things out and then probably decide what they're going to do with those type of vehicles and stuff like that.
Okay, so not quite sure, but maybe.
But you get charged a $50 surcharge.
Thank you.
Your handout says eligible vehicles subject to the road use program. It just says our electric vehicles not plug in hybrid or high.
So the hybrids will just get paid, you just pay a $50 straight fee on your registration.
Okay, go ahead. Next item.
Okay. Our traffic enforcement program, if you guys want to discuss anything about or ask a question about our red light running, our speed cam and our noise cam. Right now, we're in the process of implementing a noise camera study. Where they're going to use cameras to measure the noisy cars and mufflers in certain areas. I think they're going to choose 10 areas around Oahu. And what they're going to do is just study and see what, what type of cars or how many cars have noisy, making a lot of noise, you know, that kind of thing. But they won't get ticketed or anything. All they're going to do is collect information about all these areas where there's complaints about people driving and making a lot of noise on the highways and streets and stuff like that. But they got 10 different areas that they're going to try to study. And we just signed the contract or we are about to sign the contract with the stuff. So it's going to be almost like the red cam, red light and the speed cam.
But if you say there's no, no ticketing involved, what's, what's the value add of?
They presented to the legislature this and let them know this is how much it's collecting, how much type of noise that goes over the decimal. I think they're going to use a, a amount like 14 decibels above the and whatever they're going to report is how, how much cars are doing that, what vehicles are doing that. And then they can decide if they want to start ticketing them, like how they do the red light and the speed cam. What the speed cam is also is under review now because bill died in conference and that's the bill that, there's a lot of questions because HPD has hard time doing that because they got to be the one that gives the ticket. So they're trying to put the Department of Law Enforcement to also have it or hire people to look at that. So right now, the 10 cameras, the stoplight cams are also the speed cams too. But those are the same intersections, same cameras. So eventually, I think they got to decide how they got to address the moving vehicle violation on the car because that, that affects people's insurance and stuff like that. Unless, so they're trying to, I think, make the, those type of ticket like a regular ticket and then not a moving violation. So I think that has to be ironed out, but the bill that was supposed to address all those things didn't pass. So that, that, the speed cam tickets and, and that kind of stuff won't be issued. But they're taking information already on the, on the speed of people going through those intersections. The cameras, they're not issuing anything, warnings or fines or anything like that right now. So, but in the, you know, eventually you run your red light and you're speeding to that, that intersection where there, the camera, you can get a ticket of $400, $500 based on the two because you're speeding to the intersection. You got a red light on that ticket. So you can get two tickets on that. That's the problem. I mean, that's a big issue that you'll see.
Okay. Paige, you had a question?
What is the cost, Galen, of all of these cameras you're putting up to collect information to get it to the legislature so they can do nothing? What is the cost? Because there's no bill that's going to, that's going to go through. So.
Okay, like the stoplight camera, we said already appropriated, we're going to spend about four to 10 million?
10 million, four to 10 million per?
No, no, this.
Okay, and what is the cost?
We got to, we got to hire the contractor to, to install the cams and all these stuff.
Okay, and what, and what about the noise one?
And we also got to reimburse the city and county attorneys and the HPD because of all those, all those costs that they're incurring.
Okay, what is the cost for the noise collection?
That one is appropriated right now, two and a half, two and a half, five million.
And this money comes from where?
The highway fund.
Which comes from where?
From you guys' gas tax and your, everything that, any that deals on highways that comes out of a highway fund will come out of the.
I think, I think that.
Or even from the federal government. They can, if they can appropriate or use some of that too.
Before all of this collection data starts, I'd really like a little bit more information because it's not going to go anywhere. You guys are going to collect all this data and you're going to send it to the legislature who's going to make up bills that are never going to pass?
The main, the main focus of the red light and the, and the speed cam is to change people's way of driving and.
Has it worked?
Well, I, I, I drove to Vancouver and Washington. When I see those cameras and everyone just stops.
Yeah, but the difference is, is there's enforcement. I'm talking about Hawaii where we don't have oversight and we don't have enforcement because we're like 2,200 people short in our staffing in the city right now and we're short on HPD. So I'm not talking about the mainland. I know about the mainland. The mainland, those speeds are $705 tickets. That makes people change. Here, you're talking about a hundred dollar ticket or two.
You go into a red light, it's $250.
Okay, but you just said they're not ticketing people.
No, they are for the red light, not the speed cam yet.
Okay, so speed's not ticketing, red light is.
The red light is.
Sound is not, sound is not ticketing and you haven't put up those information yet.
That hasn't come up, come up. That, they signed that contract with, with the consultant and, and all the contractor to do the proceed and, and start installing the noise cam.
It just seems, I'm, I'm, I'm confused because it just seems like a lot of information gathering to go nowhere. A lot of money is being spent, you know?
That's what the legislature and.
The legislature's asking for this information?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Chairs of the Transportation and stuff like that. We don't, we're not going to just spend our money because we're, we're getting close to, you know, low and, and these programs don't make money for us and we don't get back our full cost because we have to pay out everything.
I understand. I understand. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Galen, a question came up earlier at tonight's meeting about how much a speed hump costs to install. Do you have any information about that?
I think the speed hump is about 100 to 200 thousand per hump. I think that's what it costs, I think, usually.
Okay, that was, that was what this.
I'm just going based on that. I'm not, I'm not the engineer. I just take care of the money that we got to pay and find the, find the bill and then we pay for it. That's all.
But if you could find out and let me know, because a resident did come up and say that he had heard it was either 100,000, 200,000 or 300,000 per hump. So if you could just let me know. Now, could we move on to the left turn lanes out of the Coco Shopping, Coco Marina? Who else want a handout about the six options?
The Cal Highway Traffic Study. Yeah, we have copies over there, about 10, 15 of them.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is the traffic study that the highways, traffic division did. Okay, this is the, um, traffic study that the highways, uh, traffic division did. And it was finished, uh, finished on May twenty-second of this past month, May. And these are all the different scenarios that, um, that the study came up with. In the first scenario that they looked at or mentioned, which is in Figure One, is the left turn signal at the intersection going into Koko Head Marina. So the pros of that, um, of that, um, improvement with cost, with protect, uh, provide a protective space for the left turn traffic into and out of the shopping center. And the cons would be the high implementation costs, the expected increase of queuing on, in the eastbound towards Koko Head, and also the expected increase in eastbound left turning vehicles blocking the two traffic. So you could block off one of the two lanes that wanna go straight if there's a lot of cars that has to wait for the light to turn. And that estimated cost is, um, two point seven million. And it would take nine months to, uh, implement. And then the best, the benefit cost ratio is minus zero point one four. So that, on the benefit cost analysis, anything under, um, one, oh, zero is not cost effective or not beneficial for the amount of money you put in and what you do. And, and that's how these, um, different, um, options are, are evaluated on. And then our second, um, option was the, um, converting the westbound lane, westbound lane to eastbound left turn pocket. So what they're gonna do is take away one of the lanes going westbound and making it, and using it for that left turn signal into the pocket.
Okay, Galen, I don't think you need to explain each one, but what I'm, what I noticed is that none of these just says ban left turns out of the shopping center.
Yeah, that's, that's a.
I mean, that would not require, I mean, it would just require signage. Um, is that something that they did not even look at? Can, can you, can I ask you to go back and ask them to just look at what?
It would be the most easiest thing to just.
Yes, if they just.
The left turns and.
Right. Okay.
That's what the community wants and then we, we could, I could make them find out what it would cost to do that. It'll probably be one of the, um, better options and, and at least, uh, I mean, wouldn't cost too much. Uh, but it's just what the commu, what, you know, what your, your constituents or drivers in your area will, will say about it or.
Right. What we were concerned about was the, the risk to the draft, uh, to the drivers, you know, on that highway because people who are making left turns or trying to make left turns out of that driveway, um, there have been several near misses.
People coming out of the, that road too, right? That was another concern, right? The one that, that Port Lock, area of.
That one, that one I think has been addressed because they put that, um.
It's not fixed.
Well, it's been addressed, but maybe not fixed because there are still people that are making illegal left turns out of that area.
You still got the left, you still can go.
Yes, yes. But they, they've tried to mitigate that. But, um, uh, it, it's kind of interesting because putting in a signal light at that driveway or widening the road or eliminating lanes or designating a lane strictly for left turns into the shopping center. All of those, um.
No, these are just the scenarios, options that, that I guess the legislators or you guys would have to do, because this is not on our plan to do because this would have to go to approval and decide if we, or Ed, Ed and the highways division would wanna implement because it would be money coming out of our, for other projects and stuff like that. So this is more for what you as the board want to eventually decide.
Okay, I, I think that the board or, maybe I'm speaking on a turn, but I think that we probably don't support any of these options as well.
Yeah.
Because they're just too complex. And, um, they maybe create a greater problem.
Not so who, what the engineers or the staff took, took in when Brian was still, uh, not retired yet and that they might have just done this like this and what, what, what happened with the meeting that he had before he retired and I don't, maybe he never considered it.
Okay.
I'll go talk to the engineers and, and find out.
Would, would you just ask them, uh, whether or not banning left turns onto Kalama on Ole Highway would, uh, create a safer condition for the drivers?
So I'll get that.
Uh, yes, Paige, and then, uh.
I also want to add that Joseph's corner right here is a Chevron station.
What, what figures that?
Uh, all of them, it doesn't matter, it's, it's there. Um, there is a Chevron station.
Right.
There is a major bus stop right in front of that Chevron station. It's used heavily. Moving that bus stop would be a huge detriment to Hawaii Kai. So I think that that needs to be taken into consideration on any of these. No left turns, stoplights, it's.
I think that issue be, can be taken care of by the transportation services?
I don't think it needs to be taken care of at all, I'm saying.
The one that you make, yeah, you can address it or let them know to either move it or not move it.
No, 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 what I'm saying is it's not addressed in any of these options.
Right.
And it needs to be addressed because if you're gonna make that a one-lane highway going in westbound, that needs to be addressed.
So we'll have to, I guess we would have to contact or work with the city department.
No, because we don't want a one-lane highway going westbound and we don't want that bus stop moved and we don't want a stoplight there. So.
Right.
My thing is, as Roberta just said, none of these options are viable.
Right.
So, so, yeah. And it wasn't the question anyway.
But these are not the options that we are gonna.
These are the options you guys came up with, these are not the options that we put on the table.
Give you guys the options of what you guys would agree to or not agree to. That's not like.
Also, also I think that Koko Marina executives need to be taken into
Right.
conversation with any of these plans too. This is not something you guys can just do willy-nilly.
Yeah, we're not gonna, none of, none of these options or plans are, are any planning or implementation.
I, I'm, I'm glad that the money was spent to put this research together, um, for something that's.
I, I hope we didn't spend a lot of money on this study.
I don't even want to know what the money that was spent on this ridiculous thing.
I can ask. It's probably been a hundreds of.
I don't know, I just, I just think that this is not what we asked for, it's not what we were looking for, it's not even a question I think was ever raised by this board as to whether we need to put a light or make it a one-lane highway. So I, I'm confused by all of this, but I, I thank you because you are a plethora of information about transportation, but I, I don't know, this whole presentation, I just got.
Okay, uh, question, Joseph, and then Elizabeth, and then Jean, who's waiting online?
My question is completely different since you're here and you specialize in this. Um, when you're going to Waimea Nalo, uh, passing Koko Marina Center on Kalani Anioli in the morning, you always see a bunch of orange cones, um, that start to back up traffic and it's to mitigate, um, the traffic going into Hanama Bay. So I have always thought that whenever I see this on a highway, it's temporary, but it's become temporary permanent as the way that Hanama Bay mitigates in and out of their property.
To be controversial or anything like that?
No, I just don't understand how it is.
The left turn into the Hanama Bay.
They're on Kalani Anioli, just all queued up because instead of managing them down in the property, they do it right up on the highway. So my question to you.
Hard to make the left turn into Hanama? No.
Just a right-hand turn. They queue them up on the highway. Yeah.
Right, 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 right. Oh, they're trying to. Yeah.
They, so they queue them up on the highway and the guards up there do their business right there off the highway.
So I think they wanna push them after all and.
Well, I know, but I'm trying to understand, I've seen this for a decade or so, and I'm trying to understand how is it that
Okay.
a state highway allows for this to be a permanent way of mitigating instead of having them do that business on the property? Get it off the.
If they possibly could add another or move a little bit more.
I don't know, I just kind of thought that, you know.
I don't know how big is the shoulder and all that kind of stuff.
I just thought I'd ask you because I've always wondered and you seem like you got all the answers.
I can, I'll get you the answers.
Thank you.
I know people will get, give you the answers, okay?
Okay, Jean? Jean, your question?
Yeah, I, I want to add my voice to the disappointment on this analysis. I put forth a proposal for how to deal with the problem of left turns onto, um, Kalani Anioli Highway, and it wasn't addressed. You know, instead of costing millions of dollars, it would cost maybe a hundred thousand dollars. And so I, I don't know what you guys are doing, but let's focus on the problem and getting it resolved in an economical and practical way. Rather than fancy engineering, we just need to stop the flow of traffic from proceeding the way it currently does. And that's not very hard to do. Stanchions are cheap. We could put stanchions up on Kalani Anioli Highway and stop the left turns coming out of the last exit of the shopping center. And that would solve the problem. So go back to the drawing board, please, and bring us some practical proposals.
Well, I'm an engineer, but sometimes engineers think differently and they, they look at things different than how I would.
I'm an engineer, so I look at things like engineers do.
Common sense and, and practicality, I like, I would.
And I'm looking at their three suggested proposals, which are also the three most expensive all over.
Right. So those probably won't even.
Four million.
Implement it, you don't have to worry about anything like that.
Yes, Greg?
Further to Elizabeth's comment, maybe Lisa could look into it, Friends of the Hanama Bay in terms of, uh, there is plenty of space down in the, the park, could even loop it around a bit before they go to the main parking lot. But yeah, if that's congested every morning, then maybe Department of Transportation could kind of kindly ask City Parks to move their business into the park.
I'll, I'll, I'll find out and get, get the idea why, why they do it and.
Yeah.
How it was.
Well, they always tell everyone to get there before seven. So it's everywhere you look, if you're going to Hanama Bay and you don't have your tickets in hand already, gotta get there at seven. So that's why they back up.
City traffic service is doing itself.
Well, I think, I think one of the issues too is that those people that stand at the top are not Hanama Bay workers. That is, that is a, a separate company, it's a separate contract outside of Hanama Bay. Those people don't work for Hanama Bay, they don't work for the city.
With the reservations that have, wanna go visit.
No, these are the people at the top that are taking tickets from people and telling people, no, you can't park here, the, the bay is full, the parking is full. Those are the, the, the people that stand at the top and do that, where all the traffic backs up.
Right, right, right. You have to do that, I guess they don't want them to be in, going to.
I don't know, but there has, I mean. President of Friends of Hanama Bay, so, I mean, she needs to be involved in this conversation.
What's the question?
Well, they're trying to figure out why they implemented this traffic, I mean, the cars from going into the lot, if it's filled. I think that's what, what, what.
No, that's not the question. That, that's not the, that has nothing to do with the question or the issue. The issue is that there are cones on Cal Highway every single morning that have become sort of a permanent fixture and all the traffic is backed up from Hanama Bay all the way back down Koko Head, all the way down the hill. Because these people are waiting in line to get in. And the question is, is, yes, to get into Hanama Bay, it's a nature preserve. So can they do their business further down into the bay area as opposed to doing it right on the road where all that traffic backs up? But if you're asking if they can, the question is, is they're on contract, they are, we can't, they're not city workers, we can't go say, hey, your business is down here. They, oh, they do work for.
Okay, Elizabeth has a follow-up.
As it relates to you, Kalani Anioli is a state highway. Is the state, is Ed Sniffin aware that City Parks is utilizing Kalani Anioli Highway for traffic mitigation every single day?
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure them and the traffic division would know.
I understand, so, we're trying to understand.
I'll talk to them and then find out.
Yeah, so if they could.
Get a better idea of what, how it's all keep about and who takes care of what yours.
And, and what, what could we do to help mitigate it because
Right.
it doesn't get better, it's only getting worse?
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, Galen, thank you very much for coming to, oh, one more.
And if you could find out the cost of the cone implementation of, on an annual basis, how much it costs to put out those cones and remove them?
At the, I mean, at the Hanama Bay one.
Hanama Bay, correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on all that.
Okay, so you're gonna come back at a, a, another date, future date, with some additional information
Right.
about these questions and.
Want me to come personally or you want me to do this on virtually?
You can do it virtually, uh.
Okay, whatever, I mean, just let me know.
All right, okay. Natalie, you have a question?
Thank you, yes. Um, so I'm just, just a comment actually on the idea of banning left turn lanes out of there. People are then gonna have to drive through the parking lot because if I recall correctly, that middle lane or that middle driveway also has no left. So the far, uh, other side has no left. I'm pretty sure the middle has no left. Okay, so then what you would be doing is you would be moving the problem down to the next driveway? Is that, is that the intent? Because my concern was that if people have to drive through the shopping center, they have to go up the hill there to Luna Le La Home Road, which is a queue of about three, three vehicles at most. And so I don't think that would work very well, but I, I think that if it were moved then to the middle driveway, you would still have the same kind of problems, just in a different location. And I just also wanted to mention that, um, you know, the next time the state does a, a traffic study like this, please consider the bicyclists and pedestrians because reducing the shoulder lane to five feet would introduce conflicts between pedestrians and bicyclists. It is not wide enough for both of them to use them. Yeah, that, that's not, it's, it's not here, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Jean, you have a question? Let's make a.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Natalie's comment. Um, I disagree. Moving the left turners to the middle exit from the shopping center would help, it won't solve all the problems, but it will help solve the problem. It'll reduce the amount of congestion, you know, because you, now you've got, currently got people making left turns out of both exits. And that's just chaos. And making left turns only out of one exit will reduce the chaos. That's my comment.
Okay. Um, I think we've exhausted discussion on this subject, so Galen, thank you very much for coming and with all of that information and, um, we'll talk to you again at a future meeting.
Right.
All right, thank you so.
So let me know, I mean, at the next, um, you need, you want me to show up or I can, you want me to do it?
Well, I think at the next meeting, if you have some responses to some of the questions that came up tonight, that would be helpful.
Well, I'll get the responses and I'll email, email all this stuff that I know and find out.
All right, that will be helpful, sure.
Guys, you can decide what, what you wanna do at the next meeting or not, on, on other information that, or questions that you asked me tonight and want me to give you and I'll, I'll, I'll give you the answers.
Okay, thank you so much.
Decide what you wanna do.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going on with our officials reports and, uh, first on our agenda is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Amy Asselby. Hello, Amy.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, I have five updated, um, uh, some feedback from questions that were asked last month. Um, so I want to start with a question for the Department of Parks and Recreation with regard to security at Kamilo Eke Community Park. Um, the question was about locking the restrooms and DPR's response is this. The DPR contract for the closure of restrooms at night would not apply to Kamilo Eke Community Park restrooms because the park does not have closure hours. A resolution proposing park closure would need to be submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation Director for consideration to show community support. for consideration to show community support for park closure. And then in the event that the park closure hours are established for Kamilo Eke Community Park, pending funding, it could be added to close the restrooms via the security guard contract. So that's the first question. Number two, there was a question about the Hanama Bay commercial transportation contract. Does it expand upon the 1,400 visitor cap? And there was a question about the video. So the response from DPR was that the 500 ticket package that is included, the 500 ticket package under the commercial transportation solicitation is included in the 1,400 daily visitor capacity. The contract contains an exclusivity clause that tickets are for the transportation package only. All educational program is, programming is not under the purview of Friends of Hanama Bay. DPR oversees the contract and programming of the education program. The commercial transportation contractor will not create their own education video. The video created by the city and county of Honolulu and shown at the bay is the only video to be used. Moving on with regard to addressing the questions at Cocoa Crater Stables, I understand the chair has been in touch with Director Thielen, and I believe next month she may be available to come to the meeting. So I only have a brief update with regard to Cocoa Crater Stables. But the question was about, you know, generally what's happening there. So the Department of Design and Construction did respond that they, their involvement at Cocoa Crater Stables was to assist the Department of Facility Maintenance with a hazmat survey. So that's a hazardous materials survey. The Department of Design and Construction does not have any project for the stables. The only other project near the stables right now is the water line to the botanical garden. Anything further, I think we're gonna have to delay until Director Thielen comes to the meeting next month, I believe. So there was a question and a photo shared with regard to 404 Portlock Road driveway improvements encroaching on the sidewalk. So the DPP took a look at the photo and they said, yes, a permit would be required for a driveway and a variance would be needed for the special tiles. A sidewalk encroachment variance is required for the sidewalk in this photo. So I hope that definitively answers that question. And then there was concerns raised by Julian Lipsher, we have noted, with regard to a commercial vehicle and a trailer on Kauai High Street. So the HPD responded that District 7 Patrol Officers conducted checks along Kauai High Street and located the commercial vehicle and trailer. Upon observation, the vehicle and trailer were not blocking emergency access points and were parked legally. However, vehicle and trailer were cited for expired safety checks and the registered owner of the vehicle was located and working on bringing the vehicle and trailer safety checks up to date. Officers will continue to monitor and address any future violations. And that is the last item on my report.
Questions for the mayor's rep, Lisa?
Good evening, Amy, thank you for coming this, this evening. I have a question, I didn't hear your report completely on Hanama Bay. Could you please repeat what you said about the educational piece under the new contract, transportation contract? You mentioned something about Friends of Hanama Bay, could you please repeat that?
They said that the DPR is responsible for overseeing the education program at Hanama Bay and that the video that is used there is the only video that will be used. The commercial contractor will not create their own educational video.
Did you say something about Friends of Hanama Bay?
Yeah, they said that the Friends of Hanama Bay, all of the educational programming is not under the purview of Friends of Hanama Bay.
Oh, yeah, that's a given, I wonder why that even came up?
Maybe how the question was phrased.
Oh. Well, that's rather sinnied, well, thank you for your response.
Sorry.
Sam, and then Paige?
Thank you for the, the report, Director Asselby. I just, a quick comment, I wanted to thank you and the other departments involved in getting that trash can placed at the Pico Drive Bus Station. The homeless man that frequents that bus station has been using that trash can and it is very clean and no need to call out crews to clean out the bushes of rubbish. So good job to all the departments involved in you as well.
Paige?
Thank you.
Amy, thank you so much for your report. So a couple of things regarding Hanama Bay, the contract for the 500 tickets, that is under the 1,400 tickets, I understand that. What is, what are going to be the rules regarding them reselling? Are they gonna be allowed to resell those tickets to another contractor? Is that a rule stipulation? What is, what is the rule surrounding that? Because if they can't sell, whoever it is, blah blah tours or whatever, if they can't sell those 500 tickets each day because it's an each-day contract, I'd like to know what the rules are to them for reselling those to another, to another tour company. I don't know if you have the answer to that, but if you could get the answer to that, I would appreciate it. The other thing is regarding the walkway paving to the street and over the sidewalk area at, at the Portlock Roadhouse. What is the next step? You said that it's DPP that has to talk to them or how does that, what is the next step on that? They do need a permit and they do need a variance or something? What is the next step for? I mean, is DPP gonna go out and talk with them or?
Yeah, they did not say in the report, but I can follow up and email you on DPP's suggested next steps.
For DPP?
No, for, yeah, how, what happens next if?
Well, it's already done. So it's not, it's not like they're gonna say they need blah blah blah, it's already done. I sent you those pictures. So my question is, is they do not have a permit, they do not have the variances. Is DPP gonna go out there and tell them that what they need? Is DPP gonna reach out to them?
That's what I was saying, that they, I will ask, what is the next step?
Okay.
They've seen the picture.
Okay, yes, and thank you so much.
All right, Jean, and then Greg. Go ahead, Jean.
Hi, Amy, thanks for your report. I'm gonna go back to the Kamilo Eke Park question. Do, do I understand correctly that in order to just lock up the bathrooms at night, we have to have park closure hours? Meaning that the whole park has to close and just to close the bathrooms?
The response was that, so a resolution proposing park closure would need to be submitted from the neighborhood board for the DPR director to consider to show support for the park closure. In the event that there are park closure hours established, pending funding, it could be added to the security guard contract to lock the bathrooms.
Right, that seems kind of ridiculous to me that we can't lock up the bathrooms, that we have to close the whole park just to lock the bathrooms for late night.
I would also think that we could make a request that just the restrooms be closed or consider just closing the restrooms rather than closing the entire park. So I think this is coming up under Board Business later, so we can talk about that then. Amy, Greg has a question and then I have another follow-up question.
Okay.
Okay, I was on the Hanama Bay transportation question. Is that dealing exclusively with Roberts Hawaii or is that open to other bidders?
It was a revocable permit that was competitively solicited and I don't believe they have announced who received the award.
Okay, so I, I think in an earlier month, we had heard that maybe Roberts was behind most of this. I've also seen a report today that there's an anonymous complaint against someone at the PUC who also sits on the Roberts Hawaii Board. Is a particular person there, happens to be the COO, if that person is the one who is pushing it, that would seem to be a conflict of interest. Just.
This was a project that was brought up as a part of Oahu's Destination Management Action Plan to try to support more opportunities for, excuse me, visitors to get public transportation to some of our hotspots. And so the belief in pursuing this was that we could take rental cars and individual vehicles off the road by pursuing a commercial contract out to Hanama Bay. So that is my understanding of why this was, this contract was put out for solicitation.
Amy, I sent you Jean's email with pictures attached about those five trees that his neighbor had to cut down and whether or not you were able to respond to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was nothing yet in the report. We'll be working on that to bring, to share a response in July.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes.
All right, one last question.
Amy, real quick, you know, I, I, in my head right now, I've got about five more questions regarding Hanama Bay. So Senator Thielen's gonna be here next month from DPR to answer these questions regarding the Hanama Bay issue? That's a question, also.
She is planning to come, as I understood from just being CC'd on the emails with the chair. But I believe the focus was Cocoa Crater Stables, but I'm pretty sure like she'll be open to other questions, yes.
Okay, and there is a guy that's involved in this, right? What's the, what's the entity that's involved under DPR that's handling this whole concession thing with Roberts and this 500 tickets thing? Who's handling that?
The Department of Enterprise Services.
Okay, could we please get somebody out here at the next meeting from Department of Enterprise Services? Because I think this is something that needs to be answered and there's a lot of questions that are gonna come up that maybe Senator Thielen is gonna not be able to answer right away. So maybe he could get briefed or they could get briefed and come out here and just address that specifically at the next meeting.
What is the question?
The question is, could you have somebody from Department of Enterprise Services to address the Hanama Bay issue and the 500 tickets and Roberts Hawaii and what the parameters are of the contract and what they will and will not be allowed to do? Come here to the next meeting, next month in July, to address all these questions. And I'm sure more that are gonna come up.
I can certainly make that request, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much, Amy, for coming and joining us tonight. Judy, did you have a question for Amy that come on up?
I was just talking to one of my friends and she had gone to Kahala Mall and had talked to some of the store owners and kind of got a feel of what's happening there. She said, because of the homeless population, one of the store, stores had to close early because the, the homeless would just come in and steal, you know, because the storefront is open. And in the area where people, you know, buy and buy food and sit down in that lobby area, the homeless would come and approach them and they would feel intimidated. So I don't want to see that happen to Hawaii Kai. And I was wondering, is the city doing anything to, you know, kind of control this prob, or solve this problem?
Amy, you have any comments?
I mean, there's a multi-pronged homeless strategy that the mayor has been working on since he's been in office. And I think maybe directing you to some of the resources would be the most helpful way to describe and explain it. I don't know if maybe next week, if Mike Buck does present on Core Services, that's one way, instead of calling HPD, which in the case of someone being intimidated or harassed by an individual who may be houseless, that they can call the HPD and seek their counsel or their support in dealing with a person who they feel threatened by. But beyond that, I think the best thing to do might be that I could share, you know, some of the information on all the strategies that are underway at the city level.
Because I've been approached several times at the 7-Eleven in U Valley and it's very frightening because they'll, a man will come up and, you know, it's very scary.
Mike Buck is still online, I think he's listening in even though he's incapacitated.
In an instance, if you feel threatened, I don't, that's not what Mike Buck is dealing with. In the case that an individual feels threatened by another, that may be a case for HPD to intervene.
Okay, but Mike may, Mike, might want to learn about the increase in homelessness at the shopping malls and some of the businesses. So that might be an area that they might do some outreach. You have a question, was it Julian?
Question for Amy. I'd like to understand how a commercial vehicle can be parked on a city street legally. My reading of the ordinance is that there's a, a specific time limit in terms of hours, this vehicle attached, trailer attached to a commercial vehicle has been there for a number of years. So in your report, you'd said it was legally parked. Do you help me understand how, how that interpretation is made?
I can definitely ask HPD for another, for more information. Yeah, there, there, I guess in this analysis that they shared was just that since they're not blocking emergency access points, they were parked legally.
Yeah, they, it's, the, the issue, I believe, was not that they were blocking emergency points, it's that they were parked. A commercial vehicle was parked on a, on a city street where cars, buses have to cross a yellow line in the center to avoid.
I don't think there's any issue with a commercial vehicle parking on a city street. Of course, that happens all the time.
Legally.
Your concern may be about the length of time that the vehicle is parked at this place? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's been probably seven or eight years now.
If it's, yeah, if it's not moved, I believe they can tow the vehicle. So CSD did not respond, the community, Customer Services Department. They would need, it says they would need an exact address to investigate if the vehicle could be towed off the street. But HPD doesn't seem to suggest any enforcement action, and that they're suggesting, just looking at the circumstance that they encountered, was that it wasn't illegally parked.
Okay, Amy, if you could follow up, if you could report back on the city's towing contract and what could be done for towing larger vehicles?
I think what they need is the exact address for the Customer Services Division to be able to investigate the issue here.
And that could be provided.
Is that possible? Okay.
Perfect, no problem.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. Now, we're going to be moving on to the rest of our officials' reports, and we're going to have to do this fairly quickly. So the next on our agenda is Chair Tommy Waters's office. Do we have a representative from Chair Waters's office online or in the audience? No? Okay, I do know that his newsletter was sent out by his aide today. Is there, well, I do know that Governor Josh Green's representative is here, Cameron Black. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, Chair, Board members, members of the community. Good evening, Cameron Black with the governor's office here tonight. I'll keep this brief, I don't have a lot to update you on. The abandoned car that was asked about by Alan Davis, we didn't get an update. I don't know if it's still out there, so we'll still, it's great to hear. So that's done. The one thing that I did get an update on is the sirens that were broken Portlock. And from the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, "We understand the importance of these sirens in ensuring the safety and well-being of our communities. We'd like to assure you that our electrical contractor is currently making steady progress on the installation of these sirens, which are part of 20 other sirens Haime is working on currently." Haime anticipates that the full installation of these sirens, including the Cocoa Head Siren, will be completed within the next 30 to 60 days. I have a contact with Haime if you need one. There is a Haime Siren Status Map that you can check online that shows red and green, what's been working or not. There's over 400 emergency sirens throughout the state. You can see the one that you folks identified is red, for sure. That's the update on the down siren at Portlock. I did do a little bit of inquiry into the e-bike bill. Wasn't able to get an answer on the rationale behind what was posted online. That's why it's on the veto list. Galen, I can continue to follow up with that. I did get a response from the governor's office saying they'll look into it. So I can email that to the chair if that would be helpful. So that is the, my briefing. I want to thank you for another informative meeting tonight as a member of this community. Yes.
Go ahead, Paige.
I'm really confused about this siren, okay? I was told that this siren, we have zero, zero emergency awareness in my district, zero. We do not hear the siren that is at Sandy Beach, and we do not hear the siren that's at Mauna Lua Bay. So considering the wealth that's involved in this district, I would think it would be in the state's best interest to fix the damn siren. Because if something happens and my district is wiped out, the city will be less than broke. Okay? We were told that this siren was actually fixed and working on March 10th. It's now June 24th, and nobody in my district has heard that siren go off on the first working day of the month. So I would like to know that that is a priority and not one of 400 across the state that need to be looked at or installed. And if I sound frustrated, it's because I've got constituents who are pissed at me. I didn't hear a siren, I didn't hear a siren. I'm calling people, "Did you hear a siren?", because I'm sitting in my house on Portlock Road on the first working day of the month at 11:45, and I don't hear anything. So I'm calling people who live up on Lumahai or who are at Hanama Bay or who live on Portlock, and nobody hears anything. So can you imagine how scary that is to know that there's a tsunami coming, but we don't know that there's a tsunami coming? The whole district knows, but not Portlock Road and Mauna Lua Triangle. So if you could please look into this and find out what the hell is going on with that siren, I'd really appreciate it. Along those same lines, my understanding, and I've asked this question before, my understanding is that each of these sirens has four separate signals. One for fire, one for tsunami, one for hurricane. If I'm mistaken, please correct me, but this is my understanding. It is also my understanding that nobody that I know that's alive knows the difference between any of those signals. So, so if they do have four separate signals, and we're supposed to know the difference between fire signal and a hurricane signal or a tsunami signal, it probably would behoove the state to educate the public as to what each of those signals are. I personally don't know. If I'm, again, if I'm mistaken in that there's only one siren, that it's just an emergency, then I would like to be informed of that also.
Okay, I will take it back. I'm not, I don't know the answer to that tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, and I will see what's done with the educating folks on what's what.
Thank you. I think it's a big deal, because I thought when they put the one in at Sandy Beach...
Okay, you need to move along. Are there any other questions?
I was told that that's what happened with the one at Sandy Beach, there are four separate signals. So if that's the case, thank you.
I'll get an answer to that one.
Thank you so much.
I will be on the mainland at the next meeting, so if you have any questions, please feed them to the chair in advance, and we'll try and get answers to you before I take off. So thanks again.
And Cameron, could you please give me your email address before you leave tonight?
Yes, yes, for sure.
All right, Joseph?
I know you mentioned the update on the car, I think it has been cleared out. But driving from Hawaii Kai Golf Course to Makapu, there was a vehicle that went through the guardrail, and they replaced the guardrail, but the vehicle's still down there. I just wanted to call that, I don't know if they wanted, for safety reasons, just to get the rail replaced, but I want to make sure they also were able to extract the car, hopefully had a future plan for that.
So the railing is still broken and the car is still in the ditch?
No, the railing they repaired, but they just left the car. It's like they're going to have to take the railing back off to get the car out.
Okay, I will try and see if we can get some clarity on what's happening there.
All right, thank you very much, Cameron.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from Senator Stanley Chang's office? Senator Chris Lee's office? Representative Joe Gideon's office? Welcome, Joe.
Aloha, everybody. Thank you for staying, sticking around. Esteemed board, it's great to see everybody. I've had a chance to meet a couple, I look forward to meeting each and every one of you and getting to sit down and chat. For those who I haven't had a chance to meet yet, I'm Representative Joe Gideon. Had the honor and so humbling to have been selected to fill the remainder of Representative Jean Ward's term. Jean was such a strong advocate for our community, and I look forward to carrying the torch as a voice for our community in the Capitol as well. A little bit about myself. Born and raised here in Hawaii Kai. Went to school, elementary school Camiloiki. Went to New Valley, St. Louis for middle school. Proud graduate of Kaiser High School, class of 97. Also a small business owner. My brothers and I started our business 25 years ago at Kaiser High School. We are still working together. We are 26 days in, in office. And thank you to my office manager, Jillian. Thanks to her, we're hitting the ground running. You may have seen as you walked in, we have a copy of our first newsletter. It'll be hitting the mailboxes end of next week. And a legislative wrap-up, give you a description of some of the bills that passed, as well as a quick description. We also have a community input survey. This is so important, we want to hear everything we can from you. Listing everything from what are our top, top issues in the district, how you want to be contacted. We've also got a QR code for our digital survey, you can submit it there as well. Just like Jean, I want to have an open-door policy at the Capitol. Come down, call before you come down to make sure I'm there, but I want to meet with you. I want to hear what you have to say. As you can imagine, the past few weeks have been pretty busy. Had a chance to meet with HPD, met with Hard a couple of weeks ago. Principal Diaz last week, Cocoa Head, as well as Cappy, Cappy Goo right here, Haione. I'm looking forward to meeting Principal Mu at my alma mater, Kaiser, Principal Yoshimoto at my old elementary school, Camiloiki, as well as different mall management, Coca Marina, Hawaii Kai Town Center, Hawaii Kai Shopping Center. I know they've got their issues as well, so we're looking forward to hearing from all of them. I've had meetings, I've had a couple of meetings with a few departments with Kamamea Schools as well. Sure we're going to hear, hopefully hear, some good updates tomorrow night. Other items we met with them on are talking how we can help stimulate business. I know the Coca Marina, Hawaii Shop, Hawaii Kai Shopping Center, Hawaii Kai Town Center, small businesses are struggling, so looking at ways we can help stimulate the existing businesses that are there. On that note, I'd like to applaud the Haione, I have to kiss her respectful development, Tom, Cheryl, and his team. They've left already. But we're going to see them tomorrow night, I want to give them an additional plug. Please, please come out tomorrow night, Kaiser High School at the cafeteria at 6:00 PM. Tommy Waters, myself, as well as Hard and Kamamea Schools, and we're looking forward to hearing what they have to say. Thank you. Hi, Paige.
Thank you for coming tonight. Questions for the new representative? Paige?
Hi. I think it's interesting that you have a survey here, then you're asking us what the biggest issues are facing East Honolulu, when I want to know what you think the biggest issue is facing Hawaii Kai.
Some of the top issues, that I think?
Yeah, you're the representative, and you're in that position. So my question is, what do you think is the biggest issue facing Hawaii Kai?
Absolutely. I mean, right now, the biggest ones that we're talking, everybody's talking about is Kamamea Schools, the land leases. Judy, you know, you're far moving, Kamila Nui. Hostile living, as always. But I'm looking forward to walking the district, you know, in the next coming months, to knock the doors and really learn what everybody's issues are. But this is why we're doing the survey, I need to find out.
Okay, and you're talking about East Honolulu, so you're not including Hawaii, you're including Hawaii Kai, but you're talking about everything from Inahaina to Waimeaalo, all of East Honolulu?
Well, the area that we're focusing on, East Honolulu, we're focusing on our district, District 18, from, you know, the Wanalo Bay, the entrance there to the Makapu lookout.
Okay, so Hawaii Kai?
Hawaii Kai.
Okay, you didn't ask, you said East Honolulu.
I apologize.
So are you planning to come to all of our neighborhood board meetings?
I'm looking forward to coming to as many as I can. Like I said, right now, I'm, I'm looking to be a sponge. I want to absorb as much input as I can from everybody and from the board.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paige.
Any other questions for our new representative? Well, Joe, thank you very much for coming tonight. We hope that's to see a lot of you at our meetings.
Looking forward to it.
Yes, Jean Ward has big shoes to fill, so...
He has some very big shoes to fill.
So congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from Representative Mark Hashem's office? Any congressional representatives? All right, we're going to go on to Board Business. First on our agenda, as always, is updates on Kaevi Coast Scenic Byway. Does anybody have any updates at this time? Yes, Natalie?
I just have a request, and I don't know how many of you remember, but part of that plan included taking out that yield sign at Lunalela Home Road and turning left onto Kalanianaole Highway, because it's in the wrong place. It's after the crosswalk, so I just wanted to bring that up. I think it should be taken out.
Natalie, you might want to let Galen know about that sign, and, because he might be able to do something for you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
I agree.
Okay. Update on Kamila Nui Valley agriculture? Judy, you have more to share with us?
As promised, Kamamea Schools did send us a letter offering us a one-year lease for the valley. And many of us, they had previously sent us another letter designating all the requirements that we need to fulfill, and a lot of it is trying to clean up our nurseries and make it, not our nurseries, but our farms, so that it'll be in a more presentable, pleasant surroundings. So a lot of us are working on that, and the farmers who are leaving have to also complete that task before they're released. So it's, it's a kind of bittersweet, because I'm losing so many friends. But, you know, we've raised our families there, and we've had a good life. So I, I wish them all aloha, and thank you for all of your support.
Are you staying for the year, Judy?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm, I want to accept the one-year lease, but I'm still hoping that we can negotiate longer terms with a reasonable lease rent.
Elizabeth?
So for those of you who don't know, I've been volunteering back there for about 15 years. And so I'm happy to say the nursery that I volunteer at is also staying. You could do a lot of good things in one year, you never know, so.
Yeah, and there, there are new farmers in our valley who are very innovative, and they have good ideas, and they're way younger than I am, so, you know, we can carry on the legacy of Kamila Nui Valley.
I'm glad you're going to be staying for a little bit longer. Judy, when you know what the new terms are for, you know, what Kamamea Schools will be offering, would you share that with us? I'm sure the community would like to know, you know. If the land is going to remain in agriculture, I'm sure that the terms, contract terms for the leases are going to be different. And so if we could learn a little bit more about, you know, what those new terms are, it would be helpful. Sam?
And thank you for continuously coming to the meetings and updating us on what's happening, because it is very important to, not just the board, but the community as a whole. I'm curious, do you know if Kamamea Schools offered a one-year extension to all the lessees within the valley, or is it, are they selected?
I only know of a few.
Elizabeth?
One thing I want to say is that I don't believe it's an extension. I believe a one-year license agreement, a brand-new situation. Because the leases ran out at the end of this month, which was a 50-year lease back from Henry J. Kaiser days, right? But I want to know, and I think everybody wants to know, will we have knee-e point settas this year? And possibly next year too, since you'll be there, right? Okay, cool. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Judy, for keeping us updated. The next item, and we need to make an adjustment. Natalie pointed out that I mislabeled this next item, considering designating a section of Kamilo Eki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly. considering designating a section of Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly. Um, the Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park is further up Luna Lila Home Road, further into the valley. And I think we've been talking about, uh, Kamiloiki Community Park on Hawaii Kai Drive and Luna Lila.
I don't believe we were. I think we were talking about the one farther up the valley.
Really?
Talking about Kalama Valley Park.
Well, that got mixed, but we were talking about the one at the end of the road and up the valley, Community Park.
Yes, Natalie, go ahead.
Neighborhood Park, sorry, I'm getting confused.
Okay, so you have two items on your agenda for this evening, correct? You have the dog-friendly park, which I had suggested be Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park, which is the one farther into the valley. The issue that I think you're on right now is the community neighborhood park with the closure of the restrooms. That's the one at the skateboard park. Okay, so the dog-friendly issue then is the neighborhood park.
The one further into the valley?
So may I, so.
Oh, okay, so 7.3 is correctly labeled.
Yes.
It is 7.5 that's incorrectly labeled.
Yes, so may I make a comment then about?
Yes.
Okay, so Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park, the dog-friendly park. I suggested that this be, um, that you asked DPR to label this a dog-friendly park and the reason is that there are a lot of owners, dog owners who already use it. I just wanted to mention that, um, during last month's meeting, somebody said something along the lines of, well, it's already, people are already using it that way, so we don't need to label it that. And I just wanted to caution people that, you know, when we have laws that people think are not reasonable or that they're just disobeying, when you put other laws out there, then it's just like, well, that's another law and we don't really need to obey it. They're not going to enforce it. So I would ask that you have the city really legally allow parks, dogs in this park, so that they don't have to be disobeying the law every time they do so. Those are my comments on that.
Paige?
I'd like to know what the definitive differences are between a park that is not dog-friendly, a park that is dog-friendly and a dog park.
Well, um, first of all, this particular park says, um, there's a sign that says, I believe, no animals, so no dogs are allowed, period. A dog park is like the one over by the police department, the city hall, that's a dog park. It's enclosed for just a dog park. The in-between part, I think they have to have leashes, but I'm, I'm not real clear on if there's any other differences.
So a part, so this Kamiloiki Community Park, the one you're talking about, this is the one that's further up Luna Lila Home Road, right?
Neighborhood Park, yes.
Yeah, okay, so it's past the school further, okay, I know what you're talking about. So that park right now is not animal-friendly?
Correct.
There's a sign that actually says no animals?
Something along those lines, yes.
Or something, yeah. So are people taking their animals there now?
Yes, and they are doing so illegally.
Okay, are they getting ticketed?
I don't think so.
Okay, so what they're doing is illegal, but there's no consequence to what they're doing?
Correct, which is why I'm suggesting that it be made legal.
So, okay, but you're asking for a sign that says dogs allowed?
Whatever the DPR is, whatever their proposal is, just to allow dogs, to make it dog-friendly, whatever that entails.
So, okay, so instead of a sign that says no animals, it would be a sign that says yes, animals, but they have to be leashed? There, there are rules involved with that or?
I would imagine there would be rules, yes.
And what is the consequence if they take their dog there and it's not on a leash?
I, Paige, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't work for the city.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to just figure this out in my head because you have people doing what you said is illegal, but there's no consequence. And so you put up a sign that says you can do it now, but there's still no consequence if you still don't follow the rules. So I, I'm confused as to what the populace is going to think the difference is.
I, I don't know, I didn't do any surveys or.
I'm on your side, I'm just trying to figure out what the populace is going to think.
All right, Greg?
And there currently are a number of parks that are designated as pet-friendly. And yeah, the main condition, they have to be on a leash. And yes, people do violate that, but that's kind of why I'm not making an issue of the Kalama Valley Park. People use it, there is no enforcement, doesn't matter. So I'm not going to push that issue, even though I think it should be pet-friendly as well. Um, but I think it's, as Natalie says, if people are doing it, why not just make it legal? I think that should probably apply to most parks, but they should keep them on leashes.
Okay, so what's on the agenda for us to consider, uh, approving is requesting or letting Department of Parks and Recreation know that we are in favor of designating Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly. And our interpretation of dog-friendly is the animals need to be on a leash. Is this? We can, I mean, in terms of requesting it to be on leash, it's not a dog park where dogs run loose because that's not going to be an enclosed area.
Okay, but if we're asking them to keep their animals on leashes, then we have to also ask them to please clean up after the animals. Okay, I'd like to know what all those rules are that we're going to ask them to do before we ask them to do it.
Okay, uh, Greg?
City parks have a definition for what is dog-friendly. So, yeah, I think that's all encompassed within their definition.
All right, any other comments? Are you ready to take action? All right, how many of you are in favor of, um, uh, designating Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly?
May I add something?
Certainly.
Just say a section of Kamiloiki, that's confusing, it sounds like a dog park.
All right, a section of?
No, we're, we shouldn't say section, it should be.
Designating the park, Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park.
Are we using the language dog or pet? Does it matter?
Um, I was going to use dog-friendly, but it's up to you, do you want to?
No, I just, I think just to, I, I'm, I'm for it, but I would like to remain consistent with the rest of the other parks. So I just want to know what that language is that they use so that we can remain consistent.
Well, Department of Parks and Recreation, in their letter to all of the neighborhood boards, referred to dog-friendly parks and whether or not we would be open to designating additional parks in our community as dog-friendly. So that will be the terminology that we will use. And we will, I can indicate on leash. All right, all those in favor of designating Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly on leash? Raise your hands. Okay, Brandon, do you need a roll call? Or, or I could just ask, are there, is there anybody opposed to doing this? No one is opposed? Oh, Jean?
No, 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 I was raising my hand because you asked for hands.
All right, so you're not opposed?
I'm in favor.
All right, so no one is opposed. So, uh, I will send a, a letter to DPR indicating that we are amenable to designating Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park as dog-friendly with dogs on leash.
For the record, I would also like to say that I'd like to walk my cat if I had one, too.
On a leash?
Good luck with that.
All right, we're going to be moving on to the next item, which is whether or not we want to consider action on commercial vehicles and boats and boat trailers parked on residential streets, constricting traffic flow. So, uh, what would this board like to do? And members of the community, if you'd like to weigh in, we'd be happy to hear from you. Comments? Yes, Greg?
Yeah, I had, um, added that and we talked last month about the commercial vehicles, but it does seem like there's, uh, a number of boats and boat trailers on public streets as well. But I would also add that, and this is just a discussion, I wasn't really pushing any particular view, but I know that those folks need options, they need a place to park the boats. So it wouldn't be helpful to just say they should be ticketed. I think we need to, um, seek various options. There's the one park across from Costco, um, but they evidently need more. We know of one neighbor down the street who's on a wait list and has been for months. I don't know for that particular one or wherever, but there's clearly just not enough spaces to accommodate the number of boats and trailers.
Any other comments? Yes, Elizabeth?
I think that, um, we should look either, I guess it would be county roads that we're referring to. So we should reach out to them and ask, like, we reach out to them and ask them to help with calming measures for traffic. I mean, for speeding, we should ask them to help us talk through and think through what to do about this, um, ongoing problem that just keeps, keeps on growing, doesn't seem to change. So I think we need input from someone at that level.
Paige?
I think that's a great idea, but I also am sitting here thinking, when people buy these boats with the assumption that they can just park them wherever they want, then why are they buying boats? Boats either need to be in a boatyard or they need to be in a harbor or they need to be in the water or whatever. But if you buy a boat and you have no place to keep it, then you shouldn't be buying a boat. It's like saying, you know, we don't have enough housing for all the people in Hawaii, so we're going to just level all the land and build a housing and housing and housing and housing so that everybody in Hawaii has a house to live in. That's insane, okay? People have to be responsible for their own things. And if you're buying a boat and you have no place to keep it, then you shouldn't be buying a boat. It's that simple, but you can't endanger traffic on a public road because you decided to buy a boat and you have no place to keep it. And I'm sorry, I'm going to piss off a lot of boat owners, but, you know, we're talking about the safety of many as opposed to the one person who owns a boat and has no place to keep it. We have to think about the safety of the traffic and commercial vehicles. There are laws that, I'm, I'm confused as to why Amy is saying that there are no laws and the HPD is saying this, this truck is parked legally. It's not whether it's parked legally, it's been parked illegally for seven years because it's never moved. They have to move, granted, it's only like three inches, but they still have to move. And HPD knows that, so they're not doing their job. So if we include boat trailers endangering traffic on these small roads that we have, then I think that needs to be talked about, that needs to be looked at. But to say that we need to start supplying boatyards all over the place because all these people are buying boats is insane.
Holly?
Just a clarifying question. I know of one boat, one accident when the bus hit a boat trailer, but other than that, how common is it that there are accidents caused by boats? It doesn't seem common to me. I'm curious to know, is this a known issue in our community that's causing a problem? Or is this just a personal reference or it's personal?
Elizabeth?
Hawaii Kai Drive, um, when you pass, from Kaohol'i, past the wetland, and when you're getting to the Oahu Club, there's always a trailer and a, and a boat there or just the trailer is there, and for some reason, they always park right on the bend. And so it really creates a problem for, for cars that are driving because you also have the in and out of the Oahu Club. And it's that sort of a hazard that everybody has to stop and then wait, can you get over to get around? It's that sort of a thing. And then bicyclists, it becomes a real hazard for bicyclists when we're trying to share the road with them because where are they supposed to go? So it's that, again, that sort of thing. So if I had my druthers, I'd say no trailer or boat parking on Hawaii Kai Drive because it's a main artery that serves us and we want to keep cars moving. But that's just one area, so, and I don't live on Hawaii Kai Drive, just so you know.
Sam?
To echo Holly's point, I, I think we should ask HPD for specifics if they even keep that type of data, but I certainly on Hawaii Kai Drive, um, I consider myself a, you know, a vigilant driver, but I, I get startled when I'm passing one of these trailers because there isn't a, a blinker or any type of reflector on the corners of these trailers, which protrude out significantly more than the average car. And, and being parked on roadway like that, um, I am surprised that there aren't more incidents, but I can imagine that it's, um, I mean, it is dangerous. But also, you know, navigating within Kamiloiki, I, I know on Miloiki Street, which you, you, it's, it's not enough for two cars to pass each other. There are boats that are just parked there, um, and it really limits the, the, um, yeah, the flow and the ability to navigate on small city streets. And, um, as Paige was saying, if you want to buy a boat, keep it on your, your private property or, um, pay to have it stored somewhere that, um, has that, that, uh, capacity. But the city streets to, to dump your, your toys and your, your hobbies, um, I do not think all of us taxpayers should be subsidizing, um, a, a weekend hobby if it even gets brought out during the weekend. So, um, I think it's a longstanding problem and a lot of these, these vehicle owners, um, are taking advantage of the fact that the customer service department doesn't have a towing contract set up. And so boat, what does it stand for, Bout Another Thousand? That's basically what they look at when they, they get another ticket. You know, it's just the, the cost of, of having the boat, which is probably cheaper for them to pay the ticket than storing it at the, the marina. Um, so I, I would like for the board to, to take action on this.
Okay, well, actually, I was going to suggest that I come back or I put it back on the agenda for next time and try to maybe get somebody from the Department of Transportation Services, uh, to speak to this or to give us some guidance on how this affects traffic in our area. Is that all right? We won't forget it, but we won't take action tonight. Okay, I'll put it back on the agenda as a discussion item rather than as a action item.
And I think maybe asking them to not do a study. I would like, we don't need them to pay to do a study to come out and see how it affects traffic. We already know that it affects traffic. Maybe, you know, we ask HPD to come out or they're going to be here, let's ask them.
All right, the next item on the agenda is considering requesting the Department of Parks and Recreation to close the Kamiloiki Community Park from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Uh, we've been told that, um, by Amy Asselby from the mayor's representatives, uh, the mayor's representative that it's not possible unless there's park closure hours. But I don't think it would hurt to request the consideration of just closing the restrooms at the community park. Natalie?
Yeah, thank you. So this was the item that is improperly labeled on the agenda and I, I'm pretty sure that it doesn't follow, uh, the sunshine law that you, um, I mean, because it's not the park that you were intending on talking about, so.
Well, the, the board is clear on what park we're talking about. It's just that I mislabeled it on the agenda.
Right, so the agenda states Kamiloiki Neighborhood Park, which is not under consideration in the community park, so.
So we could leave it on the agenda and bring it back next time as Kamiloiki Community Park.
And I would like to reiterate my opposition to closing the parks.
Right, I don't think, none of us are in favor of closing the park, but we would like to maybe be able to close the restrooms.
Thank you.
Yes, Elizabeth?
I'm not talking for city parks, but I did speak with somebody there and I couldn't understand when I had heard, um, providing we have the budget for it. And I was like, well, what's the big deal about having the park person close it? Big deal is that they leave at one time and the park is open. Um, you know, maybe you would close it at nine o'clock at night hypothetically. And remember, the problems that we're having at this park is happening at nighttime in that bathroom area. So I had said, what's it going to take to close that bathroom? And the contract that they have is based on security, uh, security company and they go around to the different parks that's under contract. So even if we were to say, um, close the park, it doesn't mean that it's going to get, from what I understand, but we could find out next month, resolved right away because the contract that's out there with the security company has X amount of parks. Now, in order to add a park, you got to take off a park or you got to go back and renegotiate that contract. This is what I was told. That being said, I said, there's got to be a creative way that we can close this bathroom. And there is always. So you can, you have adopt a park, you have relationships with city parks and you can work something out with city park if you have a relationship where community can potentially, um, close it. But once you commit, like a community group can do that, um. A neighborhood watch group can do... So, I don't know who was complaining about this, but my thought was whoever those residents are in that area, they're perfectly suited to meet with, talk with, and say, "Look, do you have a neighborhood watch thing going on? And if you don't, maybe we do this, and we work with the city on this kind of idea that they are now responsible for closing it." You only need to close it. You don't have to open it, because the guy starts really early, and he can open it. So, there's a creative way to work with city parks, but we're missing that piece of who that entity or entities are. Again, I'm not speaking for them. This is just my own research that I did in calling and asking and trying to figure out something else. So, that's an option. We want to keep our park open. What group, or groups, or neighborhood watch, or residents in that area can make that commitment? And have the city feel confident that'll get done.
Who is the guy that was unlocking or locking the gate at Job Corps? Wasn't there a guy that was unlocking the gate at 5:30 every morning or something at Job Corps that was responsible for that? Oh, he never did it? Oh.
The city would not hire the neighbors to do it. Okay.
You're saying that this person has to be hired by the city to lock the bathrooms?
I'm talking about the other park.
Well, the gate at Job Corps. Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Okay. I'm gonna leave, bring this back on the agenda, and we can... I'll have to correctly label the park so that the community knows which park we're talking about, okay? The residents had come to the board meeting, and I will follow up with them and let them know that this is on the agenda, and we'll talk about it at the July meeting. Yes, Holly?
I have several people who have complained specifically about the bathroom. They live right across from it. It's horrific what they're dealing with. So, I can ask them to connect.
Sure, and let them know it'll be back on the agenda for next month. Okay, are there any reports from board committees? No reports. Next on our agenda is approving the minutes for our meeting of May 27. The meetings were distributed. Are there any requests for revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are accepted as they were distributed. Are there any other board announcements? Then I'm gonna go into the closing announcements. Our regular meeting of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board is Tuesday, July 29, at 7:00 PM at Haha Ione Elementary School Cafeteria and on WebX. The Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board regular meetings are cablecast on Olelo, Channel 49, on the second Monday of the following month at 9:00 PM, and repeating on that month's third Friday at 7:00 AM. Videos of the meeting can also be seen online, either at the olelo.org, olelonet website, or the honolillo.gov neighborhood board website. I want to thank you all for staying with us this evening, and I hope you're all having a great summer. Our meeting is adjourned. See you in a month. Oh, one more thing, sorry. This is the last meeting of this particular board, and I want to again thank all of the board members who are not returning. I want to thank you all for the great work that you've done in this last term. So, members of the audience, there'll be a lot of new faces at our July meeting, which is the first meeting of the new term. Thank you all. Meeting is adjourned.